Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's August twentieth, twenty twenty-four special call meeting. Ms. Clark, please call the row.
Here.
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 Present.
Here. Here. Present.
Present. All right, check your mic or they may need to switch you out. We couldn't hear you. Okay. Thank you. We do have a quorum. Thank you. The purpose of this meeting is to approve the budget amendment to fund Whitehaven High School Herbert STEM building and approve the resolution to employ board and district general counsel. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. It is with heavy hearts that tonight's moment of silence is in remembrance of a number of members of our community and within the district. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We're now on to public comment. We have six and you will have three minutes each. We ask that you would follow our policy where we devote thirty minutes to special call meetings. Please state your name and your address. Refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system when you are lodging a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip or make abusive comments. The chair will have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individuals who are disruptive and do not follow the board policy. I will call our speakers in order and we ask that you would be ready to speak. Jamila Lucas, Crystal Harper, Dr. Salisbury, Ashley Martin, Eddie Jones, and Wayne Hawkins. Thank you if you will come in that order.
Jamila Lucas, twenty-nine ninety-seven McVay Trail Drive, Memphis, Tennessee. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to Superintendent Dr. Fagan, members of the school board, and our school community at large. I rise this evening to address a situation that I feel is critical for Whitehaven students to prepare them to compete successfully in a global world of science, engineering, technology, and mathematics. I also rise as a parent of a student at Whitehaven High School who was one of the first to be celebrated in this year's inaugural ACT celebration for students who score twenty-five or better on the ACT. I feel that our students are important and they do matter. We have worked diligently over the past seven years to bring the STEM building project to fruition. Our students are behind and getting further behind when it comes to the technologies and it is no fault of the students. Our building facility is not a modern building, but we do the best with what we have. Due to the building not being designed to accommodate recent technologies, efforts have been made to be, efforts have been made to bring our system up to standard. But as with any renovation or retrofitting, it is still not as effective as an efficient or as efficient as a new system. For instance, during spring testing, the entire system went down and the students lost valuable time on their very important end of the year assessment and they were not allowed additional time to complete the testing. On another occasion when students were taking the ACT as required by the district, many of the students complained that the computer systems were operating very slowly and were shutting down, often taking away valuable time on this time test as well. I did not feel that either of these test results were valid. However, we rose above. To compare the performance of Whitehaven students with students in modern schools or those with STEM buildings fully equipped is a disturbance to the students, school, and parents. These children matter and I want to see them set up for success, not failure. To hear that funding, to hear that funding was allocated, that was allocated for Whitehaven's project was being reallocated to other projects was quite alarming and disappointing to me and to the Whitehaven community. This project's starting date has long passed and the completion date is uncertain, but the students need the STEM building now. I realize that there are numerous high priorities in the district, but I ask and I beg of you to give us this money today. Make us a top priority. Make students at Whitehaven a top priority. Thank you.
Good afternoon to the MSCS Board Superintendent Dr. Fagans and the community. My name is Crystal Harper, address thirty-one ninety-seven Allison Avenue, three-eight-one-one-two. Part of learning, leading, and leaving a legacy is empowering and equipping the community with what they need to be successful in fulfilling the vision of our leader, Dr. Vincent Hunter. Proverbs thirteen and twelve states that hope deferred makes the heart sick, but a dream fulfilled is a tree of life. You can't have fruit without a seed. This lab will be a tremendous blessing to the Whitehaven community that includes over thirty nationalities. Thank you in advance for being citizens of integrity and keeping your commitment to join the donors and the Shelby County Commission in funding the Whitehaven Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Lab as we, the parents, students, citizens of the community, educators, administrators collectively learn, lead, and leave a legacy. Thank you.
Dr. Salisbury?
With the board superintendent and all in attendance, I went home last night and I asked the Lord for direction. And the directions that I got is an unusual one for this type of setting. The Lord said to me, don't complain. Give thanks to the board for what we know they're going to do. I bless you. I pray with you. I pray for you because the need is astronomical. Our students need you. Community needs you and I'm praying every day that it will come through. Where we started, you're gonna bring us over the top. Amen.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Martin. I live at one-six-five Golf Club Circle. Learn, lead, and leave a legacy. That is what we have been hearing for the last few months. That is our goal. But how do we actually do that? As a teacher and a parent in the Whitehaven community, I try to stress to my children that there are two things that matter more than anything in this world, and that's your name and your word. Whenever one of those two things get messed up, it changes everything. Once someone doesn't believe your word, it tarnishes your name. And once you can't, at that point, you can't be trusted. It was promised to our school that the funds would be given so that we could have the STEM building that would elevate the Whitehaven community as a whole. We had been promised that a letter would be written to show your true commitment to how we want to grow our children and this great city of Memphis. What kind of legacy are we leaving if we can't do what we say we're gonna do? We, you can't lead people that don't trust you and you can't learn from people that you don't trust. So all I'm asking is that we strengthen the trust in the Whitehaven community. Let's do what we say we're gonna do. Thank you.
Eddie Jones, uh, one forty Allos. So, uh, to the school board, Dr. Fagans, uh, on behalf of the Whitehaven community, the teachers, the parents, and our parent organizations in Whitehaven, uh, want to say thank you, uh, for all you do. As a former county commissioner, I've had the opportunity to sit in seats where, uh, decisions had to be made by a board. And was it good for whatever it is that you were voting on, but in this instance, it is good for our children. So much work, time, and effort went, was put into this to raise the funds and the district was the last piece to get us across the threshold. So I stand before you today just to simply ask. I know you have hard decisions that you have to go back and forth, but this one ought to be pretty easy because you sit on a board every day to do what you do on behalf of all of our children. And so we're simply asking that you do the same in this instance for the Whitehaven, their community, and all that they do and the goodness that comes out of that school. And thank you.
Wayne Hawkins?
Good evening to the board. My name is Wayne Hawkins. Thirty-six years in this business, eleven ninety-six F E. I don't have a speech for you. I'm gonna speak from my heart. I don't know anything else. Dr. Fagan, you met my nephew, Chase Hawkins. Now, I'm the uncle. My name is Wayne Hawkins. Tonight, this issue about the STEM building, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, it's a, it's a easy, it's a slam dunk. We should have already done this. Memphis, Tennessee is, Memphis, Tennessee is in trouble. There's a crisis. Crimes everywhere. What are we doing? The children are looking to you to solve this problem. I teach African-American history, world history, and U.S. history, and I talk to my children every day. Everybody in this room is ready for you guys to do that part. I know there are five bodies that make a difference in a city. School board, county commissioners, uh, city council, mayor, and the chamber of commerce. I love Memphis. We love Memphis. We gotta do the right thing for these children. My class all day today has been asking, Mr. Hawkins, are we gonna get the STEM building? I don't know. Mr. Hawkins, will we get the STEM building? I don't know. Dr. Fagan, I guarantee you, if you came to Whitehaven, entered the auditorium and asked every child to raise their hand, every child would look at you and say, we want the STEM building. The STEM building is not just for Whitehaven. It's for Memphis. Elon Musk wants to build a computer company here in Memphis. Do we all know that? Guess what? Science, technology, train these kids and get them ready for their occupations. We don't have to outsource to anybody because we can in-house everything if we as adults just do the right thing for these children. That's all we got to do. I mean, it's thirty-six years, given my life, heart, blood, sweat, and soul and tears as an educator, as a coach, and of course, a teacher. Give me my best, give me my effort. After thirty-six years, I'm really tired. This is a slam dunk. This is easy. This is simple. Why can't we just solve it and do the right thing? You have money problems. I understand that too. Well, guess what? Everybody got money problems. But if we don't invest in these children, Memphis, Tennessee, I promise you, will not get better because who's doing the crime in Memphis? Let's just be real about it. Who is committing the crime in this city? Do we really talk about it? No. We have, we don't even see it. We can't go to East Tennessee or any parts of Memphis, Cardova or Drummond Town. It's right here. The problem must be solved by us in this room. Thank you.
We're now on to request for action. The question is now on the approval, the budget amendment to fund Whitehaven High School Herbert STEM building, which is six-point-one. Are there any questions before I read, uh, this resolution? Any questions from my colleagues? Any comments before I read? All right. It states, "Resolution amending the Shelby County Board of Education's fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five amended budget, August twenty-twenty-four." Whereas TCA forty-nine dash two dash three oh one provides that the budget shall set forth in itemized form the amount necessary to operate the schools for the scholastic school year beginning on July first, following or on such date as provided for by charter or private legislative act, that any changes in expenditure to or money as provided for the budget shall be ratified by a local board and appropriate local legislative body. Whereas it is necessary to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five general fund budget and appropriate said funds as reflected in item number one, now be it resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education hereby approves the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five amended budget and appropriates the said funds as follows. Number one, the general fund will increase by one million forty-one-thousand-two-hundred-forty-three dollars at the Memphis Shelby County Board of Education direct, directions to fund the Whitehaven STEM building with the planned use fund balance. A, one million forty-one-thousand-two-hundred-forty-three dollars closes the funding gap of construction costs and the cost of the storm shelter. B, one million three-hundred-thousand dollars is already allocated in the MSCS capital budget and funded by the previous administration through the county's capital bond funds. This is all, also has been approved by both the Shelby County Commissioners and the Board of Education. Both allocations, the one million forty-one-thousand-two-hundred-forty-three dollars planned use of fund balance and the one million three-hundred-thousand dollars of county capital funds, which totals two million three-hundred-forty-one-thousand dollars, two hundred, three, two million three-hundred-forty-one-thousand-two-hundred-forty-three dollars. MS, MSCS will pay directly to school seat on a reimbursable basis by submitting receipts to include executed contracts, paid invoices, and payments, uh, disbursement confirmation. This will be completed monthly with the current practice of reimbursements between the county and school administrations. MSCS will then submit the one million three-hundred-thousand dollars of receipts for reimbursement to the Shelby County Commission on the twentieth day of August twenty-twenty-four, submitted before the Board of Education, August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, out through a green board chair, Shelby County Board of Education, along with the commissioners that are present. If no questions, if there are no questions, I need a motion and a second. Thank you. Motion by Keith Williams and a second by Joyce Doris Coleman. Roll call vote.
Well, yeah, let's, let's get some clarity to the resolution. Uh, Madam Chair, do you have a copy of the, a physical copy of the resolution before the board?
Yes, sir, you should.
I don't have a copy in front of me. So just for future reference, uh, Madam Superintendent, um, cause I, I do have the one for the general counsel. I don't physically, I don't have a physical copy of, thank you.
So this is moving fast. I think, uh, definitely before we vote, I think there's some, some comments we should get on the record. Number one, uh, this body, as is stated at our last meeting, is in full support of the Whitehaven STEM, uh, STEM building, uh, and, and look forward to seeing this, uh, groundbreaking. I think there's been a groundbreaking ceremony. Hopefully, all nine board members can be invited in the future, not just the chair, no shade there. But, uh, but we do look forward to, uh, to supporting this great work. Uh, but I do think there's just language, board members. I think when we pass a resolution, let's make sure we understand what we're saying yes to. Um, the, the variance between, uh, Madam Superintendent, the variance between the one point, the one million and now the one million forty-one thousand. Can somebody give clarity to that? I saw the, the quote from Montgomery Martin and that's what that was. It was a quote, but is that, is that the cost and is that a max cost? Is that a guaranteed cost? Uh, or is that just a, a number that they printed out that said that this is what we think we're gonna cost? Can anybody speak to that before we approve it?
I think that I can. What, what happens is that the building was allocated to start last year. There's been a time lapse and I think as the longer you wait, the more you pay. So it is best that we do it now before it, before it grows anymore.
Yeah, but the, and I appreciate that feedback, but is there anybody here since we are, uh, that wants to, and, and particularly staff, now's the time to, yeah, I'm sure they're working with some staff members. Is there anybody, Dr. Fagan, on your team that has been a part of this process, this engagement, this conversation, uh, before we, um, yeah. Because even if it's long before the current administration, I'm hoping that since this building is gonna take place on our property, that somebody internally is gonna be tasked with walking alongside, uh, this community, uh, to make sure that this is done with fidelity. All right, so that's Michelle, Ms. Michelle Stewart. All right, so, uh, can anyone speak to the, how we went from one million to a million and forty-one? Are they waiting on permission? Do I need to call names?
We recognize Eddie Jones. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, uh, that is what was submitted to the commission from Montgomery Martin. Uh, the cost of the storm shelter, an invoice was sent to them saying, this is what it's going to cost. The resolution that the commission had, had the same cost that you have before you now. So it's not anything that we're doing. It's what was given to us as to what that final cost would be. Uh, at one point, it was a million. It went up forty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars.
So, Commissioner Jones, uh, thanks for your work and continue, thanks for your continued work with the Whitehaven community. If, uh, this board had anticipated, and I know it's uh, minimum numbers, um, but if this board had committed to a million dollars and you had a, uh, G C that raised a price on us, uh, is, is that the G C of records that's gonna do the project? Are you putting it out to bid? What's the, what's, what happens next if you get a price that goes up to one-point-five million?
I don't think that will, will happen. Uh, once, once, once you approve this, uh, because there was never a commitment on it. It was going back and forth. Now that that has happened, uh, the calls are going up, I think, has stopped because they're ready to go to work next week. So, uh, and I'm pretty sure that the storm shelter is gonna be the first thing that, uh, is there. Uh, as it relates to the cost, it's nothing that we did. It's what my, the builders, Montgomery Martin, sent to the county commission and said, okay, here's the cost for it. Commissioner Ford asked for it. They gave it to him. He in turn gave it back to this body when the commission said, send it back to the school board.
And, and did, did, uh, did the storm shelter go out to bid or it was just Montgomery Martin?
No, they, they're, they're building it all.
Okay.
The storm shelter came into place, uh, as you're aware, because of the governor's action, requiring it to be in the building that's, that all schools build now. So we had no choice but to build the storm shelter. But the county commission has also agreed to, to reimburse that money. So there's not a loss from Shelby County Schools for doing so.
So two friendly amendments. Thank you for that. Thank you for that explanation. So two friendly amendments to the resolution. One is that the board has language that, uh, is, is at an amount not to exceed. All right, so, and I'm fine if it's two, uh, two-point-three-four, if that's the rule of the body. I know we committed to two-point-three. So if there was language that says, uh, our, because this is, this will be paid in a reimbursable. So while this was the quote of Montgomery Martin, it could come in less, right? So we don't wanna pay any more than, than what, um, the, than what it calls for. So we should have language, and again, just wanna be on the record, uh, for our general counsel as well our CFO, that it's on the record saying that, that the resolution, the intent of the resolution is not to exceed two-point-three-four-one. So for the listening audience, that doesn't, that means that if the bills come in and they, you have an allocation of two-point-three-four-one. Uh, but I just wanted to be on the record that, Mr. Jones, this is, this is the amount, this is the amount that the board is allocating. And also wanted to be used for, on the record, that is for construction, right? So no design work, no furniture fixtures, no consultings. This would be for work being done and getting bills back for work being done. Are we okay with that?
I'm good with that too.
Okay. Colleagues, are we, is that clear on what?
I think that was clear from the beginning.
Well, the resolution doesn't speak to that.
The resolution speaks to the resolution and what you're speaking to is just common sense, but the Shelby County, the commission has already said what they're going to allocate.
I'm not gonna give you.
And I do not believe that there will be anything that we would have to do anymore and certainly we wouldn't do more than we would have to do. But we are, we are using money that has been allocated and will be refunded to us in March. That was by the county commission.
Thank you. I agree with you.
And I moved this action.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And since, uh, we're giving the TV more attention than they need, uh, I just wanted to be on the record stating that we, we have to be responsible for the district dollars, uh, working on a number of construction projects, Mr. Williams. I do know that you can get a bill for, you get a lot more bills than the construction itself. And I just want us to, this, this body to know that what we're committing to paying for is the construction itself. Is that fair?
That is very fair. That's all we've asked for.
Yes, sir. And we did receive something yesterday from Mr. Meyer saying this would be the price if we moved and got this done. So we don't expect for anything to go up. Thank you.
And, uh, since we have not heard from the administration at all, I just wanna make sure that, uh, you guys can speak to this project as well.
So first, good evening, everyone. Our commitment remains. Um, I believe in innovation and what is necessary for all of our students. And so that's exactly what this STEM lab represents. I think it is important to be clear in the language so that, uh, moving forward, whatever comes, uh, as a request for reimbursement, we know that what we have committed to, uh, that the board has approved. And so including that language in there is significant. Uh, but the commitment remains. Uh, Ms. Stewart will serve to walk alongside. She and Mr. Langston, um, as Assistant Superintendent of Operations will serve as our internal team to walk alongside the external team to ensure that this structure of excellence, um, actually makes it up, uh, and can service all of our students and serve as a model.
Thank you. Uh, and, and before we vote, I do wanna just, uh, echo the Whitehaven community that's here. Uh, they are truly a model for the entire county. Uh, when they show up, they show out. I see a lot of familiar faces there. If you ever wanna run for, for, for office, uh, citywide, you better have the Whitehaven community behind you. So I was super excited to support this project. We know this work is important. So congratulations. Yeah. We know this work is important, so congratulations, yeah.
All right, we've had a motion and a second, and Ms. Clark, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Wood?
Aye.
Commissioner Love?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Board Chair Green?
Aye.
You have eight in the affirmative.
Thank you, that resolution passes. Congratulations. It was Sunday, Pastor Fisher, I'd say let the church say amen.
Good work, J. Green.
We're now on, thank you, to 6.2, approval resolution to employee board and district general counsel. Uh, you should have a copy of that in front of you. Uh, sir, you, all right, any questions before I allow, uh, Maurice, uh, Commissioner Calvo to speak? Uh, Commissioner Garcia?
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, Commissioner Calvo gave us a copy of the resolution, um, and...
We'll just wait one minute and allow them to dismiss. Ms. Garcia, if that's okay, just give us one minute. All right, thank you so much. All right, Commissioner Garcia, you may proceed.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to offer a friendly amendment from the, if you scroll from the bottom, the fourth, be it further resolved from the bottom, there's a section that says that be it further resolved that the board district general counsel shall be immediately authorized to employ staff and personnel to support policy development, oversight, implementation, and review and board operations. Uh, I'd like to recommend that we add, the staff shall report to the board district general counsel, which matches the language above around attorneys and district attorneys reporting to general counsel.
That realizes no objections.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm just disappointed that everybody left before we read this, just kidding. So, uh, well, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent and colleagues, uh, I'm gonna read the proposed resolution, uh, I'll say in English, not in Spanish, but, uh, a resolution to employ board district general counsel. It does need to be read on the record, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, great, here we go. Whereas Tennessee Code annotated, as section 49, 2, 203, B5, permits a school board to employ legal counsel that directly reports to the school board to advise and/or represent the board. And whereas Memphis Shelby County Schools currently employs a general counsel and its office is responsible for handling all of the district legal matters, including making legal recommendations to the board and administration, managing legal risks and claims against the district and/or district staff, and advising the board on legal matters that impact the district, and whereas the general counsel currently reports to the district superintendent, and whereas the board of education knows that it is essential for the general counsel to maintain independence and to be able to give advice and counsel directly to the board of education in accordance with TCA section 49, 2, 203, duties and powers, and regarding any and all matters arising under local, state, and federal statutes, ordinances, rules, regulations, and/or guidelines and board policies. And whereas the board recognizes its primary governance functions include policy development, oversight and overvi- and review, superintendent employment and management, fiscal authority, management and accountability, and legislative advocacy, require legal administrative support, and whereas the current per- reporting structure could lead to unintended conflicts or impact the general counsel's ability to provide independent advice and counsel to the board of education in its areas of statutory responsibility, for example, policy budget, contracts, superintendent management, et cetera. And were to ensure independence, strengthening governance, and adherence to statutory governance functions, the board desires the general counsel position to report directly to the board. Now, thereof be resolved by the Memphis Shelby County Board of Education that effective immediately, there shall be created a board district general counsel's office. Be for the resolve that the current administration general counsel will serve as the board district general counsel. Be it for the resolve that effective immediately, the general counsel position and district attorneys should report directly to the board of education as the board district general counsel. The board district general counsel should, shall supervise all district attorneys, and the district attorney shall report to the board district general counsel. The board district general counsel should have the authority to settle disputes and claims and procure professional services as outlined in policy set forth by the board of education. Be it for the resolve that the board authorizes its chairperson and/or their designees to take actions as appropriate to develop a board district general counsel job description, establish an evaluation process, including the establishment of goals, metrics, and a timeline for the annual review of the board district general counsel's performance. Be it for the resolve that the board district general counsel shall be immediately authorized to employ staff and personnel to support policy development, oversight, implementation, and review and board operations. The staff shall report to the board district general counsel. Be it for the resolve, effective immediately, the board authorizes and transfers the amounts in its current budgets for the administration's general counsel's office, policy office, office of risk management, and board office to the newly created, newly created board district general counsel's office to ensure the effective operation and alignment with this resolution. Be it for the resolve, such budget transfers and alignments contained in this resolution shall be presented to the board of education at the August 27, 24 meeting, and so, and such report shall contain specific information on the line item transfers and amounts that were transferred to the board district general counsel's office. Be for the resolve that the board shall develop a policy for board district general counsel. This policy, this resolution is sponsored by Reverend Althea Green, Chair Joyce Coleman, Vice Chair Michelle McKiskick, Amber Hude Garcia, Stephanie Love, Kevin Woods, Frank Johnson, Keith Williams, and myself, Mauricio Calvo.
Thank you, Commissioner Calvo. I don't see any light. Need a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Coleman, second by Commissioner Love, thank you, roll call vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Wood?
Aye.
Commissioner Love?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Board Chair Green?
Aye.
You have eight in the affirmative.
Thank you, that resolution passes. There being no further business to conduct in this meeting, this meeting is adjourned. I'll give you three minutes, thank you.[1104.58]
I like that. Thank you for helping me to get them on quiet. Welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's August 20th, 2024 work session. Ms. Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Commissioner Love?
Here.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Calvo? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams? Board Chair Green?
Present.
You have seven and affirmative.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of solace. It is with a heavy heart that tonight's moment of solace is in remembrance of the passing of Sharp Elementary School Principal Pamela Ann Cleaves.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The question is now on the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments?
Madam Chair, there are no amendments.
There being no amendments to this agenda, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda and a second? Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Commissioner Johnson. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Love? Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Board Chair Green?
Aye.
You have seven and affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. We are now on to 6.1, the Chair's Report. Under my report this evening, I want to take a moment to recognize the SROs for their service to the district. We appreciate your dedication and hard work. Your ability to stay focused even in the face of challenges is admirable. Your contributions play a pivoted role in our achievement as a district, and we are thankful for your tireless commitment. We're now on to the budget report. All right, we skipped, we didn't see the group in the hallway. Thank you. Spotlight on the arts, our special recognition. Our Contemporary Arts Memphis is the region's only organization that focuses on identifying and nurturing the next generation of contemporary artists. Founded by the world-renowned New York-based artist and Central High alumni Derek Forjuer, this competitive fellowship is designed to empower young artists early in the development to inspire ambition and expose them to high-quality art experiences. The following students were chosen from Memphis Shelby County School District to participate in the fellowship. Students attended an intensive art-making summer camp in June and traveled to New York to visit art studios and galleries. Congratulations to our city's next generation of artists. We have students Central High, Craigmont High, Overton High, Southwind High, White Station High, and White Haven High. Let's celebrate our students. We're going to come down and take a picture, so stand right there, students.
Good afternoon, Board, staff, and the listening public. I'm going to give you, this afternoon, let me give you an overview of the fund balance, where we are at this moment in the closing process of fiscal year 2024. Next slide. The district policy 2014 requires, requires the district to have a fund balance reserve between 18% and 15% of general fund expenditures. At this point in the closing process, we're estimated to have approximately 23%, 23% of fund balance, which is roughly $270 million after the close. Now, these are just projections. The numbers are subject to change because we have not closed out the fiscal year. The next slide. Currently, we are projecting a fund balance assignment of $81,545,379, and includes the purchase order, purchase order rollover of $43,000. Purchase order rollover of $43 million, board member allocation of $279,000, SCORP projects $1,703,000, safety and security $812,000, the White Haven STEM project $1,041,000, deferred maintenance $34,232, which equals to the $81,545. The next slide includes, the next slide is the budget amendments for August 2024. And we're projecting to amend the budget, general fund budget by $81,545,379 from the $1,283,774,172 to $1 billion, $1 billion, $365,319,551. The most notable budget amendments for the, my apologies, let me go back. The capital improvement fund would decrease by $449,000, amended the budget from $103,000, $103 million, $268,353 to $102 million, $819,102. The non-federal special revenue fund would decrease by $295,023, amended the budget from $56,405,694 to $56,110,71. The federal programs fund will increase by $3,000, $3,196,000, $3,1961, amended the budget from $310,544,708 to $313,645,669. The most notable budget amendments are the Turnaround Action Grant for Fund 12, which The Medical Health Supplement Fund 12, $10,908, and the Capital Improvement Project Fund of 7, which is $1 million. The grant total increase of all funds will be $83,902,65, $83,902,65, amended the budget from $1 billion, $849,603,15, to $1 billion, $933,505,80.
I will wait for us to get a copy before I ask my questions.
I appreciate this formal budget presentation. Just to clarify, this is the first time I've consumed it in this format and following along. Are the budget amendment notables on the screen currently additions because of additional grant dollars that we were able to bring in, which increased our budget or increased our fund balance, where the capital improvement project is decreasing it? Or, I'm sorry, that is a million dollars in the city AC. So, these are all increases from other revenue sources that are overall improving our fund balance?
Well, the special revenue fund will be decreasing.
Okay.
And the federal programs will be increasing.
Where does it?
These are just, this is not a comprehensive list. These are just the most notable variances that we've outlined here.
Okay, so the notable variances, they are all positive. These are additions to our fund balance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I want to see a deferred maintenance project line by line. And I am particularly interested in the HVAC systems. I want to see where the fund balance was last year versus this year, and how much money did we spend? And I want to see where in the fund balance FY 2024 had a transition to Lucy Elementary. I would like to see that. Where are we now?
Uh, Lucy? The, um, the state took Lucy Elementary from us.
Right, and you want to know the status of it, right? Right, so we'll make sure we speak to that. Your request for the deferred maintenance, I want to make sure that it's not something different. I can resend what we've shared, but it's project by project. Is that what you're asking for or something different?
I would like to see what we spent the COVID money on versus what we spent
Okay, that's different.
The revenue service on.
Copy.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams, is your light on?
Yes. What could, can you tell me what the total TISA funding is for Shelby County schools?
I don't have the exact number, but it's around $750,000.
$750,000? Million, I mean.
Yes.
To be clear on the record, it's about $750 million. Of course, those numbers wouldn't be finalized until a couple of months. I just want to make sure it's clear that $750 million is what she's sharing as an estimate.
So, in addition to that, what is the funding we're getting from Shelby County government?
That one I don't have off the top of my head, but it's estimated to be about $400,000. That could change because, keep in mind, we have lost students to the new innovative school district, so they, they will go in and do the weighted average on the funding and shift funding, take some of the district funding and apply it to the new LEA, the innovative school district. So, those numbers will change.
So, we've also gained some students from those schools that were under?
So, we will have a net difference, and I can get you that.
So, the difference is going to be negative? I think we gained all of those that would, would delve middle and barely middle, all those that, that.
Yes, it's not strictly based on enrollment, it's based on the weighted average.
In the deferred maintenance that you mentioned?
Yes, sir.
It follows just what you have charted in this thing as well. You only going to do those things?
The deferred maintenance listed in the slide are some of the projects that was remaining from last fiscal year, and we rolling those over to complete those projects in this fiscal year.
Will you ensure that all schools have working AC?
I would do my best.
In your deferred maintenance, so that's one of the big things that stop us from having schools and closing schools, and kids cannot survive and the teachers cannot work. So, you know, we had a big issue about them doing all of the overtime last, this year.
Yes.
But that's when you do it, when, when students are not there, so you are prepared for them when they come.
I'll, I'll, I'll take that pressure, Board Member Williams, off of Ms. Knighton here. In terms of HVACs, and I'll speak to it in my report as well, certainly as we shared during our one-on-one, it is absolutely our focus, and we, you can see it in our line-by-line projects, and then we'll increase it as well as we start to take a look at our capital facilities plan with the board and looking building by building what those needs are. But there are active, our team is actively working, and you can see our investments at work as well. I do want to clarify in terms of how much we anticipate receiving from the county, that's about $514 million, and so we can confirm that and get it to you in, in our writing. It's in the next report for our business meeting report, but I just want to make the record clear that it's about $514 million.
Again, what is the process for determining what gets on the deferred maintenance list, and how do you take them, what priorities do they have? One particular school I'm speaking of is Westwood High School, has been in need of window repairs and roofs for the past seven, eight years. When do you get on the list to be deferred? And how do you get there?
That's not my area, but Tito Langston, I'm sure can speak to that.
Mr. Langston can speak to that, Board Member Williams, is that okay? He's right beside her.
Good evening, Mr. Williams. So, as far as the list goes for deferred maintenance, as we know, by the time we get to October, there's no secret, we'll be about, at about a billion dollars for deferred maintenance, if you will. Obviously, we don't have a billion dollars to devote to a billion dollars worth of projects. So, what we do is we use a, a index that's weighted towards the severity of the projects to prioritize which project gets handled first. So, you speak of Westwood. We actually just finished the windows at Westwood, and if you look at the 56 projects that we have out on Project Build, the roof is one that you'll see this coming in the coming month. So, but to be clear and on record, the way we prioritize projects, because we don't have a billion dollars, is we use a weighted average, depending on the severity of the projects and also the enrollment of the school, so on and so forth. That's how we prioritize where the funding goes for each project, if that makes sense.
So, if a school has a low enrollment, they may or may not get fixed?
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that it may not be a, a priority. Again, Mr. Williams, if you could help me give us a billion dollars, we could do everything. But in, in, in an instance where we only have, let's say, $40 million that we, we do to fund balance, then $40 million is, we have to start at a place where we are saying that we're going to go to a school that has a, a, a high number of enrollment, and the severity is, is, is a high need. For instance, I'll give you an example. Something like a roof will have a high point of, for severity. HVAC, obviously, will give you higher points for severity. So, we're looking at all those things in a weighted average to determine the priority with the funding that we have to do deferred maintenance.
Thank you, Chair Green. Of the Turnaround Action Grant, can you get us the list of the 30 schools and what actions will be taken to improve those schools?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Board Member Garcia, Woods, and Love?
Are there any personnel or programs and services that were eliminated in our approved budget that have been added back in with this amendment?
I don't have that information with me, but I can get it to you.
Okay, I would love to see that.
Okay.
Superintendent, and give me your name again.
She said your name.
Leslie Knight.
Leslie Knight. Um, Toni, the former superintendent, she told us that the state was sending an allocation of, I can't for, can't remember how much she said, that we were not expecting that. Yeah. Uh, the state was sending, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the growth and outcome, funding is what you're speaking on.
How much was it?
How much was it?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't have that information off the top of my head. I can get that to you. I know at the end of the fiscal year, it was adjusted, which is what they're going to do, adjust your dollars at the end of the fiscal year, but I can definitely get that information to you.
Um, we spent that money yet?
Oh, if, if it's okay, Board Member Love, I'd like for Mr. Langston to speak to it since he closed the year out for us, and he has that information, just so we have it on the record.
So, Ms. Love, usually the TISA outcome bonus comes around December of every year. So, last year, we got about $8 million. We won't know until the stats from last year, TVI scores, things of that nature, gets finished. So, we usually get it around late October. Then, when the state has those statistics, then they'll do the outcome bonuses and things of that nature. Then, we'll know around Thanksgiving, early December of this year, what the outcome bonus will be.
I have another question for you, Tito. And you too, Superintendent. We get our funding based on the number of seats in our school buildings. I understand that you canvass the community today, and we are waiting on how well you did. But I have a question about contracts. You said in your interview that you wanted to get mentors for all of the students, and you said that out loud. Peer Power is a mentoring group and a, a tutoring group. I haven't heard it from you, but my schools are asking for it. Is that going to be on the agenda soon?
So, I, the team had a meeting with Peer Power. I had a meeting with Mr. Richardson, a great meeting, early July, and then the Office of Partnerships has been meeting with him, as latest today at 3:30. I think the short debriefing that I was able to get before I came down here is things were positive, so just waiting for the scope of services. Mr. Richardson was very clear, took the wind out of my sail, brought his own data, honored that there was an opportunity, you know, to strengthen in some areas to ensure that we align with the work now. So, just looking forward to receiving that, you know, in the language to bring it forward to the board so that we can get started.
About how long will it take?
Upon approval from the board, I want to say that part.
We can approve it next week.
Yes, I'm just sharing that I can approve it, so I didn't want the record to reflect that, that we were just going to move forward, so I just added that part.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I can give you a time after, just following up, just let me talk to the team real quick to give you a timeline.
We needed ASAP.
Yeah.
I don't see any more lights.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report, Mr. Williams.
Board Member Love, I think you shared that our funding is based on seats. I do want to just be clear on the record that it's based on the number of students, so the actual bodies that we have.
Yes.
Just on the record.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Average daily attendance.
All right, ready for the report? Good evening again to everyone, we'll go ahead and just get started. Let me. So just capturing, just starting right off and getting right into it, want to directly speak to the record and reflect in terms of the Executive Director of Safety and Security. Just want to honor and explain and be very transparent and then move forward to the degree possible and what I can speak to. And sir, in terms of awareness of any background information that could have been obtained beyond a background check, we had no knowledge of that. We did make the offer to the individual on the strength of experience, having worked in a school district that has its own law enforcement agency, with honor and respect to the feedback provided by officers and their desire to do the same as early as I, when I entered the district and standing up a peace officer's force. In addition to that, nearly 30 years of experience and certainly there are no connections beyond my previous work experience with this individual. Upon receiving a report late Friday evening or Friday night, I asked what could be obtained and be featured in the report. After receiving it, we reviewed it, I agreed to accept the individual's resignation based on what I thought would be a poor reflection on our district. Keeping our students in mind, our staff as well, but also a very important role, safety and security, I made the decision. I began to call board members, beginning with the Chair and sharing exactly the same. The transparent leader that I have been, I still have no issue being that, I own that I made the offer to the individual based on the information that I had. I also own that immediately upon learning what I knew, I made a decision as well. As we think about the status of our district, the advancement, if you will, that's the adversity. The advancement, if you will, is looking at, and we have taken a look at our application. Our application currently does not support some of the background information that we could receive in advance and so we are working to strengthen that in alignment with legal practices and working with our General Counsel and certainly the Office of Talent Management. In addition to that, just strengthening the types of questions that we can ask on the front end and thinking about if necessary, if the board would like to bring policy where that might prove helpful, that specific high-level executive roles may need to be the exception in terms of the depth of information that we request and seek from individuals who are seeking employment in our district. As Superintendent, there is a privilege that exists to make appointments and to make decisions that I feel are best for the district and in this regard, I did that and I am resolved in what I did based on what I knew. And as I shared, after learning what I know, now we made a decision to move forward in a different direction. I give you assurance, if you will, that our district is fine. I'm thankful to the SROs, I'm thankful to the Safety and Security Department who has demonstrated support on the other side of this experience. They have emailed, shared information. As I shared with them, things that I do not have awareness of, I cannot speak to, but as I shared with the board in my interview, Board Member Love, you asked the question, what will you do when you don't know things? I shared that I would quickly learn them and then I would honor and own the responsibility of what needs to happen next. I think that's where we are. We will take a look at who we need to place in that role, but right now, the office is secure. It still sits with Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations, Mr. Tito Langston, directly reporting to him and who's been outstanding for us over the past two weeks is Director Terrence Riley. Has the historical context of the district, a very balanced individual, was incredibly supportive in being both an advocate for our school resource officers or our safety officers, as well as providing and aligning with the vision as I shared it. He found it to be very forward-thinking and also he's an incredibly collaborative individual. The officers already report directly to him, those officers who were in our schools, certainly you see the majors report to him as well, and so he's been a great support. And we thank all of our officers, directors, managers, and those who are doing the great work that is often unseen. I've said it in previous spaces and certainly here, that security is never needed and valued until you need them. And so this is a group that I met with very early on, March 29th, and listened to them and so it was very disheartening to know that they have been trying to reach out to me and that information has not been provided to me. And so internally, I've addressed those personnel and I assure you that it will not take place again and I thank those officers who have reached out via phone and email to share as we move forward, how we make this work and attain the level of excellence that we know exist and improving upon the same. Any questions?
I have one for you. I agree that we need to strengthen policies so that this will never happen again. Truancy, is it back under safety and security?
Yes, ma'am. So had the conversation with Judge Sugarman and we most recently, and I informed you all that, we met with DA Mulroy as well and so considering the connections to the work, not to make it punitive, but ultimately that's what happens on the end, it's just seated there.
Do you have enough staff for truancy?
That, one of those conversations directly with the individual, I think I shared with you individually, that I've just started meeting directly with the people who oversee the work and so meeting with Ms. Stuckett, I'll meet with her again, we met very early on in a group, but meeting with her individual to make sure we have the resources to do the work the way that we need to do it and that's just pushing what you'll see in the report later on. We have about 690 or so students who are already truing. But I'll show that momentarily. Is that okay? Is that fair? Okay. Additional questions here?
Mr. Williams?
Yes. With the decentralization that you have started, I want to know from you how the curriculum is being standardized across this district? From K to 12, K1 to 12-1, how do I know that if my child transfers from school A to school D, that he will be on the same track and the same curriculum, the same book? And I've heard a lot of teachers complaining about they were not given a lot of direction with that sitting they had at Bellevue Baptist, because it was not very personable and clear to them. They could not interact and do those kinds of things as they'd been accustomed to. They just had to watch the video and follow the guy who was giving the instructions, I guess. So I'm asking, what evidence is there that our curriculum is in sound structure across this district?
So I appreciate the question, always love talking curriculum with you. As I shared in the individual meeting huddles with you, curriculum, there's twofold here. A, we ensure that our teachers and our schools have the books that we need, so we've just been saying getting back to basics and you appreciated that. Certainly, we provided just a general framework, you've heard me say, reading and writing every day, every class, every campus, so emphasizing that. There's some high leverage strategies, impact strategies that have been provided in terms of bringing the curriculum to life. Dr. Myerkel and his team have been going in already through the month of August and visiting classrooms just to see and observe how we do and deliver instruction in general. As we think about the sessions that you're reflecting on at Bellevue Baptist, the back to basics, I would like to know, you know, where some of the, not their names, but just where some of those teachers might be so that we can provide the clarity needed, because we did administer a survey and it was a four point something out of five. Most of our teachers found it incredibly helpful and found it necessary. I do understand and they have emailed me and we've been balancing those, they're not really excited about the length of the lesson plans, but what it takes to deliver quality instruction on the front is a bit of investment as we think about how to shore that up. But overall curriculum, I think I shared with you that a team will be in and you wanted to take that walk as well. It will consist of teachers as well as some of the staff for sure, that will do that curriculum audit so that we can ensure, when you ask the question on the other side of the year, that we're able to share specifically across the district that our curriculum is aligned, so that wherever Mr. Keith Williams decides to send his child, that we understand that there's a viable curriculum in every building.
And it is consistent across the district.
That is correct. Yes, sir. Thank you. Good. Okay. So continuing with our Safe 365 and our safety efforts and commitments, the football jamboree was a great hit. Thank you to Dr. Richmond and his team, Ms. Weaver, and all those who were present to make this as successful as we knew it could be, but certainly as it ended up being, 67 teams battled it out, had a chance to check out a few games. Thank you to our SROs who were there, providing safety as they always do and maintaining that commitment. More than 6,300 attendees were present and we had no major incidents. So we appreciate everyone, our sergeants, all those who were present, thank you to the board for the support and then certainly thank you to the staff at our local schools and all of the athletes who gave us something fun to watch on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday as we rounded out the weekend with our middle school teams. So HVAC and opportunities, about 1,393 work orders related just to the HVAC in the month of August. That is as extreme as it sounds. Incredibly thankful to the team here, I think these are individuals that you never see and so thank you to our team who, as soon as something was reported, it may have felt like a long time, but they were there. We stretched out across the city to send vendors, as I shared last time, we asked them to prioritize Memphis Shelby County Schools projects and that's what they did. So thank you to all of the contractors, a couple from the city who worked and supporting us to make this happen. It was hot, 106 degrees, 107 degrees was the heat index at something and even a beautiful building could not withstand that and so certainly understanding our fragile spaces, our aging buildings and although we are grateful for them every day that they are standing, each time that there is an incredibly hot day, we know that we are tentatively having to make a decision that we do not want to make, as I have emphasized, the importance of attendance and every day, every minute that a child is missing, what that looks like for us. 448 of those work orders have been closed. We base or prioritize our schools based on the number of classrooms affected, so if at ABC School, there's 13 schools or 13 classrooms that are down or impacted, then we start there. The number of students that are impacted at those respective schools and then if there are spaces available in those schools to relocate students, that's how we prioritize. Recent school closures due to the HVAC, August the 5th through 12th, or August the 5th, we had 12 closures and we anticipated that being the case, that was day one, our highest number. Day two, there were three early releases and then on August the 16th, we released one school. And so we are doing very well, all things considered, we have more than 165 buildings and so while we understand that when it's hot, it's hot, I am thankful for the team for their swift turnaround as we think about applying and addressing the needs there. Thank you to the staff for your understanding and your patience. I do want to emphasize that this does impact health. We have had some asthma-related incidents and a couple of seizures and so that is still remains at the top of mind for us as we think about requesting funding and really demonstrating a concerted effort to inform the community and the masses and the decision-makers that be, of what's at stake here as we enter our capital facilities planned. Any questions here?
Is academics operations still a part of our district?
That work falls with Dr. Whitelaw and Education Services.
Years passed. I always got a list of the facilities in my district to see what they needed before the start of school. That falls under you?
When you say what they needed?
Years passed, I always got a list of the schools in my district, what they were short of before the start of school and I would advocate for that before the start of school.
Oh, in terms of resources?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
HVAC, cleanliness, supplies, desks.
Dr. Whitelaw, you have an understanding?
From my understanding, to Superintendent, Board, from my understanding, Ms. Love, was it a survey that they just compiled and asked schools what they needed and then they gave you that information back as one concise document, including the resources they needed, the support they need, as well as building readiness?
No.
Okay.
Dr. Ray was over it before he became Superintendent.
We will get that information and I will research to make sure you get those things that you got in the past. So let me research it and get that document that was given to you.
Yeah. Academic operations.
Okay. I will get that information to you and make sure you have it.
Pass the mic over to Rod Richmond. Academics operation was a function in SES, previous years. They went out to survey the buildings before the schools opened, to check for HVAC issues, plumbing issues, everything, before the schools opened, to make sure our communities were well aware of the issues before the school opened. Is that service being provided now?
Yes, ma'am. Board Member Love, I think where that work is being captured is, as the Superintendent said, with Dr. Whitelaw, but it's also being captured with our network leaders. It was also captured through our school readiness surveys where we surveyed principals weekly to see where they were with school readiness in the opening of schools, as well as, again, the network leaders and myself, we're going out to schools and making sure that anything dealing with academic operations, we are aware of.
I would like to see that for my district, a monthly, so I can know how to advocate for my district.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Can we go to the previous slide for a second? Okay, so first, congratulations on closing 448 orders, I'm sure that's not an easy lift. Can either Michelle or you walk us through, how does this process work? You have 13 orders, 1,393 orders in just HVAC. When somebody has a problem, are we properly staffed on the number of people who take that initial, whether it's a call or an email or whatever, and then of course that goes to somebody else until it finally gets to a technician that actually does the work, right? How do you feel as far as level staffing levels, proper staffing levels at each point?
Yeah, so this is one of our most significant areas in terms of vacancies, so that's why we had that hiring blitz that focused specifically on nutrition services and facility services.
Okay.
And so we were able to hire a few people there, mostly in nutrition services, this particular area remains a gap with the number of buildings that we have, one, the severity of the issues that we have with our buildings just based on age and then certainly the limited number of staff that we have. So while we have a large number, it's not large enough for the severity of the issue. So HVAC just alone, that doesn't include anything else.
Is the shortage mostly on the technician part or on the people actually in this building or whatever, in a facility managing those orders?
So I would say both and. So right now, we have plant managers, so we're working to transition them to building engineers so that as maybe when you were experiencing high school, when you call on the building engineer, they can do some of those, that work, right? And then some of the most extreme issues, you do still enter the work order, changing the lights you can do in your building, changing the HVAC, you may need to call a technician and so yes, there are still several vacancies in terms of technicians, so it's both and.
Okay, and my, just in closing, my question would be, they will lose people in the last two, three months here due to cuts, just people leaving? I mean, outside of what would you call a normal rotation of just people, like people retiring, but specifically, I'm referring to, do we lay people off who were in this situation now?
Absolutely not. So in this area, I would say it's one of the areas that we did not experience, you know, turnover. What we did do is increase in terms of pay so that we can recruit, compete with, blew What we did do is increase in terms of pay, so that we can recruit, compete with Blue Oval and spaces like that. But this is one of those areas that we did not lose individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I would like to see the HVAC systems for, we got a COVID increase, and we approved the HVAC systems for several schools. Are those included in the, the school closures? All of those have old systems.
In terms of the schools that we had to release early?
Yeah.
I recall one of those, because I asked the same question, one of those we did just make a significant investment in. I'd have to get you the names of the exact schools, but that was one of my questions. Certainly, any HVAC going down is a problem, but one that we've just made an investment is in, is a different problem. And so, I can get you that list, or the team can get you that list.
Who on your team oversees the HVAC systems and the roofing systems now?
That would be Ms. Stewart.
She oversees?
The facilities work?
Years past, I asked a former superintendent. Transbin had a new HVAC system, and it was broken within several months, and the board reallocated funds to fix it. I'm just trying to make sure the board isn't doing a reallocation, a reallocation, a reallocation, because we don't have money like that.
Yes, ma'am, we align. We've had those conversations as early as, as recently as when we brought something comparable to you all to approve last month, where someone missed the windows and we're having to increase our investments or pay for the same things over and over again with certain vendors. As we do our assessments and observations of those particular vendors, that plays a role in, you know, divvying out the work, if you will, in terms of our investment and the quality that we're receiving in the product.
This question is for you, Michelle. Do you have enough staff?
Our facilities maintenance department is one of the most understaffed departments. We have lots of vacancies in techs and lots of vacancies in roofers, plumbers, electricians, but we did recently up the hourly pay rate, and the jobs are posted and we are getting applicants that we're reviewing as we speak.
In addition to that, Board Member Love, it certainly doesn't help us like in this moment, but as we think about pipeline development, we are certainly collaborating with our own schools. We're thinking about the types of programs that are necessary to put some of our students in the pipeline to support.
HVAC services would be one of them.
That is correct.
Transbin had HVAC services years ago and a lot of the other school districts too. HVAC service would be one of them, and plumbing?
Tell me the number of vacancies we have in teaching positions as we have started school. Do we have any vacant classrooms as we speak?
Yes, sir.
How many?
So, three-hundred-and-eighteen instructional positions. Several of those are, several of those are multilingual learners, the same positions that I've mentioned before. Special education is a large portion of them, giving you true vacancies before we collapse classes. So, we take a look at our classes when we hit our twenty-day enrollment. So, several of those will decrease as we look at the number of students who are in the building, the number of vacancies and positions and personnel, it's based on the projected number of students that we anticipate receiving. And then there's a few extra in there as well. But those are our highest ones, certainly our content areas, math, ELA, science, social studies. And then we have several career tech as well, fine arts, library specialists, so the list goes on. But in terms of the number of vacancies, while we are down from this time last year, we are certainly, you know, as I've shared, one is too many. Mentioned the voluntary instructional period that we're doing for our schools or offering to our schools, and so looking for the numbers from that, and then looking at where we can collapse classes, as I shared earlier.
What is the volunteer instructional program?
Yes, sir. So, I remember when I shared with you that we offered teachers the opportunity for, to volunteer, to teach during their planning period in exchange for one-third of their daily rate in terms of what they make for their salary. They would teach a class that they're already certified in. That would take away from a particular vacancy that exists. We would keep the vacancy to fill the position, but it'll allow us to strengthen our recruitment efforts and really work to bring in qualified staff. This also includes our numbers, don't consider our international recruitment efforts, and so we anticipate bringing many of those individuals in starting in January.
So, how would a teacher be able to give up their planning time every day when it's required by law?
So, it is required to be in your schedule. You have to have your uninterrupted lunch.
Yes.
And so, that is, that is there. And you cannot teach during your lunch, so we made that clear. You cannot teach before school, but you can also teach after school and during your planning period. So, I did speak with Commissioner Reynolds and several state board members, and we did receive the waiver for this, to offer it.
Oh, because I know that the teachers, they must, they must have daily planning according to policy. So, if they don't have daily planning, I guess you're going to be exempt from that.
So, you must have it scheduled. So, it is scheduled, which is why we call it voluntary, because that means Mr. Williams is volunteering to teach during his planning period.
But Mr. Williams is getting paid, though.
But, and I, that's what I'm getting to, and in exchange for you volunteering, because I can't make you for the very reason that you just shared, in exchange for that, we offer you one-third of your daily rate. That's pretty good, isn't it?
I'll let them know.
All right.
Go cover some classes and get paid.
Moving right along, ready, set, read. Just sharing, this was envisioned by Board Chair Green. Sixteen videos over eighteen weeks, more than two-and-a-half thousand views. Video with the most views was Dwayne the Farmer Has Bees for Honey. We've covered several topics, learning how to ask for help, learning to cope with fear, and then certainly ways to learn with dyslexia. So, thank you Chair Green for standing this up, and thank you to the staff for bringing this to life. Our commitment to literacy, before and after-school tutoring begins September ninth. Families can sign up via Power School. Thank you to the families who have already done this. Thank you to those families who've asked us if we can have night school for some of our students who need to accelerate. I appreciate your commitment to literacy and all that we know is at stake. Our Book It, if you are of our generation, then you remember Book It in partnership with Pizza Hut, so I was most excited about this. Please make it happen. So, thank you to Dr. Lester and the team, everyone who worked to make Book It happen. I just want to see the pins when I, when I think about, you know, how important education is to our students, but reading is important. There was nothing like going to turn that in, to get that little pan pizza from Pizza Hut. And so, we're excited to relaunch, if you will, the Book It Reading Program. If nothing else, I will meet you at Pizza Hut for a personal pan pizza. Looking forward to sharing more information about that. And I see the audience, you are having fond memories as well and several board members. But Book It Reading Program, as we think about emphasizing literacy, is not just, hey, I hope you're reading. It is about making it fun, making the educational journey itself, one that is memorable, and one that just happens because you enjoy it. And so, this is one way to do that. I don't care if you're reading about Kyrie Irving, I just want students to be reading and writing every day, and this is one way, one more way, should I say, that we look forward to celebrating our students. And so, looking forward to the board members getting involved as well. I think I have some questions or comments here.
Oh, yeah, I just had to jump in there. I mean, you just took me all the way back to the Pizza Hut on Highland by then Memphis State. So, I'm all the way in.
I was laughing, because I already got a text message just saying, I love Book It, though, this is great. I said, this is the most excited the room has been, and we're a room full of adults. So, just let's not overlook how excited our kids are going to be when we do make it fun. So, thanks, Ms.
I would add some wings.
Whatever you like, Board Member Love, I'll make it happen, because Book It is my thing. And so, I can give you balance, I can make you have fun as well as, you know, give you anxiety. But we can add some wings to the pizza, and we can get some partnerships, partners, if you hear me, if you're under the sound of our voice, wings has been the request. We've had Wing Out Wednesday, and so we can make it happen for you. Love it. Looking forward to bringing more information about this. Reading is outstanding, certainly excited about it, certainly excited to see the adults, though, be excited about it. Multilingual learners, incredibly excited to share this as we've received some additional results and as we receive it, I'll provide it in the updates. But very often, it is, you know, we understand that we have a population of students who are fun, who have come to and chosen Memphis Shelby County Schools as their space to learn, lead, and leave a legacy. And so, sharing out the wins here, had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Richards today and really, you know, glean in on her excitement and the team's excitement about the work, but more importantly, how the work is showing up in our results. And so, we do have eight new ESL advisors. I know we talk a lot about vacancies, but we do have eight new ESL advisors. We thank you, we need you, and we appreciate you already. Supporting thirty-three schools, fourteen ESL peer coaches, and they support all new and novice ESL teachers before, after school, or during their planning periods. Some of the improvements in ESL program effectiveness, our preliminary data shows that our transitional multilingual learners in grades two through five are performing higher on TCAP than their native English-speaking peers. And so, grade three English learner transitional, one through four in ELA, eighty-five percent proficiency rate, outstanding. And grade three English learner transitional, one through four in math, eighty percent proficiency rate. So, just about twenty percent of students, we got to bring up to par in grade three in math of our English learners or multilingual learners, and then about fifteen percent, if you will, in ELA. And so, just want to say thank you to the team. I really wanted to dig into the data in this regard, to highlight the great work that's being done for a population of students. And as you've heard me share before, they're not just learning English. Some of our students know three to four, some of them five different languages. English is in addition to that. And so, certainly embrace our students and their families, and thank you for trusting us to do this work together. Questions? Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question on commit to literacy. I would like to see all the contracts related to literacy.
So, next week's board meeting, you'll see all of the contracts in general. There are about one-hundred-and-eighty-six of them that we track right now that have a performance metric to it, and so you'll be able to see that.
Because I received several phone calls on literacy Mid-South, and my school is asking for that program to be signed, sealed, and delivered.
So, I think we shared the update. General Counsel provided the update, and he can speak to it specifically, but he provided that update to the board via email. He can share it on the record here.
I'm sorry, Board Member Love, could you repeat the question?
Literacy Mid-South?
Yeah, so, there are still some documentation that we're waiting to receive on the grant funding from the Department of Education. Last communication with literacy Mid-South was that that communication would be, or that those, that documentation would be brought to us within the week. So, we expect to get those any day now. We can formalize the MOU and get that out the door.
How long is it going to take bef, after you receive the documentation?
We will begin, we will continue preparing it as quickly as we can. I expect it to be, it shouldn't take very long, so, but it will be a priority.
Because the school is in.
I understand. We will, we will certainly make it a priority to get it out of legal and get it set for approval.
We need all hands on deck as it relates to literacy.
Understood.
Just an update on our move Memphis Family Walk Run. As we think about moving Memphis, health is also important. So, we talk a lot about academics, certainly education, that's our space, but moving Memphis overall and ensuring that the health of the city, of the community, is at the forefront is also part of our focus also. And so, we have more than four-hundred to attend. I may or may not have run, but forty-two schools and organizations participated, preparing the Legacy Back-to-School Giveaway took place on the same day. Thank you to our sponsors. The facility was filled, not just with energy, but when we talk about partners and wanting more of them, it's for events just like this. More than three-thousand backpacks were able to be given, one-thousand books, as we think about literacy, students able to choose, books that they want to read, that they want to read, that they're interested in reading, and take those home. And then certainly, can't forget about the kids, the juices matter. And so, more than one-thousand juices were given. We may or may not have filled them up with sugar as well. And so, performances, thank you to everyone who stood this up, Ms. Payne, the individuals in our face, Office of Family Engagement, as well as our Office of Partnerships, we're able to make both of these events happen. And thank you to the community for showing up and continuing to support Memphis Shelby County Schools. Edulog, the bus tracking, as we thought about, as I cross fingers about this particular bus tracking app, more than four-thousand parents have signed up, so thank you. We're looking forward to sending out a survey to see the results of how this is working, any feedback that we get from that, we're able to make adjustments. We are working with Edulog so that we can provide the type of reports, you know how we feel about data, to share the number of riders, the number of routes that are run, and be really specific about what's happening. But for right now, our parents and our students who have downloaded the app can see exactly where the bus is, the anticipated and expected time of arrival. And for additional information and instructions, of course, you can log onto our website at Edulog and continue following. It's not up here right now, but our activity bus has started. We had some questions, has that started? The routes are running, we're continuing to adjust as we look at the number of students who are participating after school. Certainly, we're still standing up some of those organizations at our schools, looking at increasing the involvement. We do have our baseline numbers, so looking forward to sharing that. But the activity bus is in full effect. Thinking about enrollment, so this is a lot of information on the slide, but certainly the presentation will be online. Looks like it's hidden at the bottom there, the main number about enrollment, it's hidden. Is there any way we can get that bottom part off the slide, or it's just there to stay? No worries, if it's not, I'll just make sure I read it aloud. When we look at enrollment, what I wanted to take a look at is projections. So, this is just based on previous history trends, and so we project early on in the year about how many students, thank you, we anticipate receiving in terms of enrollment. And then you can see actual day, and what you're looking at here is day twelve, which was today. You're looking at pre-K, CDC enrollment, our accelerated learning campus enrollment, charter, campus elementary, university, middle, and high, of course, all of those are gone now in terms of the innovative schools, Excel, Memphis Virtual School, Memphis Virtual Adult High School, our specialty schools. And then at the bottom, you can see what we anticipated if the students coming from the Achievement School District were to land with us, understanding they have multiple options, the number of students there. Our actual day attendance is ninety-six, or enrollment, ninety-six-point-nine percent of the projected enrollment is where we are right now, looking at the variance here, or I did ask for fiscal year 2024, not sure where that is, but ninety-seven-point-seven percent actual day twelve, that was day twenty, in 2024, I apologize. The actual day in 2024, it was ninety-six-point-nine percent of students had shown up. And then actual day twelve for fiscal year 2025, which is the year that we're in, you can see an increase there in enrollment. We're at ninety-seven-point-seven percent. That's a difference between the one-hundred-and-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight students that were present on day twelve last year and the one-hundred-and-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety students that are present on day twelve today. Any questions here?
Thank you for providing this. I think we hear enrollment is strong. How many, how many students are actually showing up? This is helpful, and I know the resources that we're able to allocate are directly tied to the number of our children that are showing up. I think pre-K stands out to me of just what, how big that variance is. And I know, just transparently to the public, I've asked you this, just what are some of the things we're going to do for pre-K? And then a second question on our virtual adult high school, virtual school. For the virtual adult high school, are we at capacity? Is there a waitlist for that? Or are all adults who are interested able to enroll?
Yes, so it's virtual, so there's no capacity. Yes, so it's virtual, so there's no, uh, capacity there for our virtual school? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I, I didn't know. So we don't have a waitlist for that? Okay, great. Can you share more about?
Pre-K?
Pre-K.
Absolutely. Uh, so just wanna share, uh, to that end, there is a delay. Uh, pre-K uses a separate system and so there's a delay in receiving, we have to transfer that over. Uh, and so what you're seeing here is just what we have right now. So as that is update, we receive the updates. Uh, in general, I think we will be fine, uh, once we have all of the calculations, uh, and number of pre-K students. Uh, we do anticipate that being an increase, uh, or a slight decrease from last year in terms of what we projected last year, or this year's projections, uh, were fifty-four, eighty. I'd have to know what the projections were last year. Uh, Bill, do you remember those? Or is that just an error? That's fiscal year twenty twenty-four? That first one is twenty twenty-four.
No.
Okay. Fifty-four, eighty for last year and then fifty-two, twenty, uh, for this year. So slight variance there in terms of the decrease in our, our projections, but we could have more who actually enroll. So looking forward to sharing those updates there. Looking at student attendance, which is where we really start to get down to, you know, much of the work. So state funding looks at enrollment, um, our local funding looks at attendance. And so we're always watching both numbers, uh, incredibly important, but certainly as we think about the attachment, uh, to funding. Uh, looking at current day attendance, and of course this is as of yesterday, it updates at night, uh, preview, current day attendance, uh, is ninety-three point three percent of day eleven, and then the previous attendance rate, uh, last school year was ninety-two point seven percent. So hello to all of our students who are coming to win. Uh, you can see these banners, looking forward to standing those up, uh, at every school next year. Uh, but I did wanna highlight the top twenty schools because we are tracking chronic absenteeism. You have to start day one. Remember I shared that it, those students who miss those first twenty days of school, we can anticipate what chronic absenteeism will look like. We can go ahead and anticipate how they will perform in many grade levels. And so this data is important as we are on day twelve, just eight days away, uh, from our twenty-day count. Chronic absenteeism, high risk. We're looking at the schools here, uh, I won't read them to you, but you can see, um, uh, eighty percent is, is standing out there at Norris Achievement Academy Middle School, uh, and then we're getting down to twenty-seven point eight percent Volontine Elementary School. Uh, and so some of this i- is internal in terms of our effort, ensuring that we clean up attendance, uh, but some of this is just some of our students have already, uh, not shown up. Any questions here?
Well, I don't know about any other school. The principal at that school sends out a robo-call every day. Craigmont High School, because my daughter is a student there. And he is on the business.
So we, I did ask for parents to be bugged, so if you are receiving calls, I do think that when you overwhelm families, uh, you inform them, I ask for it to be done after every period, that a robo-call be sent out if a student is absent, uh, meaning you may have dropped them off, but we haven't seen them, uh, or they were here first and second period and they skipped third. And so a robo-call goes out every, uh, period, uh, with an expectation that our teachers take attendance within the first ten minutes, I think, that we've asked, maybe fifteen, I can't remember what we put in policy. So I'm glad that you're receiving that. What I do ask is that you do not block us, uh, because that's the same number that we call from when there's an emergency. And so, uh, it's a delicate balance here in serving to inform our families where our students are, but also understanding when something happens, we use the same number.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, there are four schools, Norris Road and, uh, Northwest Prep and Norris, um, um, they, um, they give the students that are expelled, what are you doing about that? Cause like I said, uh, months ago, everybody doesn't have transportation and a bus route to make it to school on time.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what we're, you can, we can see here in these numbers, uh, because transportation is not provided, then this is what we have on the other side. And so looking at how to add those routes, uh, I have no qualms about it, nothing against it, uh, as long as the board would be in agreement with it, uh, and ensuring that we remain in alignment with anything statewide, uh, providing that transportation there because every student, uh, counts and matters, but we're seeing the results already because they can choose or it's a barrier. The other part of that is, it is traditionally known as spaces where our students who, as you've shared, are expelled, attend. And so what you've heard us share and what you'll begin to hear the team share as Dr. Richmond begins to start giving out reports in this area, uh, is that these are accelerated learning campuses. And so, uh, more of our students will go there because they are on a, um, tri semester, if you will, uh, and so they can accelerate, uh, meaning, uh, quarterly, they can move forward a lot faster in the number of credits that they're allowed to receive. So several of our students who are off track for graduation, uh, we'll start to allow them to go there as well.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the actual number of students enrolled in the MCS schools excluding charters?
Mr. Y, do we have that off the top? Okay, okay. I'll get that to you right after.
Um, several parents told me they don't enroll their kids into pre-K services because the times and, um, they don't have rides to school and back home. So they offer, um, they can get, uh, a bus service to pick the kids up, uh, daycares, bus service to pick the kids up and drop them off, and we don't have that.
Certainly an opportunity to expand transportation to that grade level as well, as we emphasize the importance of early childhood education. Uh, so looking forward to making that happen, um, also. I appreciate you sharing those barriers.
Thank you. I just have two quick comments. One is, um, we're holding parents accountable for their children not coming to school, but we also have to take into account, cause like I stated last week, it was a week and a half before one of my own was enrolled in school. So we, as a district, have got to do better about making sure that we have people in place because we don't have a lot of the people from the registration, from the seed office to make sure that our parents are able to register their child. That, that's one problem I have. And when you spoke about somebody calling every day, I got a call yesterday. Grandson not at school. Where is he? He in the third grade. He's in that building. I go to the school, he's sitting there. I got in a hurry was the response. And keyed in the wrong student, Board Member McKissie. Now, our parents work hard. They can't take off when they have a third grader that's been told that they are not in school. And with so many custody battles, so many things going on, our people in the building have to do their job. Do it right or, or give it, let somebody else do it. This is two issues that I personally have had this school year that is not a good feeling for me. So I can imagine what our parents are going through. I, I mean, I'm not asking for comment, I'm just stating, we, we gotta make sure, we talk about what needs to be done, but are we really doing it for our children? Thank you.
I, I wanna clarify that, um, attendance doesn't start until a student actually shows up the first day, so they may be enrolled, but then until they show up day one, then the attendance begins. So do wanna just clarify that for understanding. And, and Board Member or Vice Chair Coleman, appreciate you raising, um, those concerns a- as well.
And they can't show up if nobody's helping with the registration that they need.
Yes, ma'am.
They can't show up if I'm making phone calls, trying to get paperwork because they were in one school and they completed that grade and they're moving on to the next. They can't show up.
Yes, ma'am. I believe you shared it was a charter school and so we are strengthening our collaboration with our charters to ensure that registration can be more, um, streamlined, uh, and easier. Uh, and that, I think Board Member Love brought up, uh, that the team was out, uh, today knocking on doors, uh, and, and looking for several of our students, uh, as we think about, uh, the importance of attendance, but we miss, uh, those who have not shown up just yet. So, hey neighbor, uh, was what we started today, we have three more days and looking forward, uh, to additional community members joining us, uh, as we knock on more doors. Uh, I think we've saw a few students, uh, but we also had several empty houses. And so that's most concerning for us as we think about where our students and families might be, uh, and as we debrief and think about our next steps, uh, this proved quite helpful. So thank you for the team for standing this up, uh, in a short amount of time, uh, and making it effective for us, uh, as we focus and continue our efforts on not just attendance, uh, but demonstrating the level of care that is necessary for our students and families. Come to win.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Got aggressive with the mic there. Um, so, uh, I appreciate the fact that we are, you know, really hitting the pavement. Uh, uh, maybe this is something that you can speak to later, but I'm just wanting to know, what is the status of this, um, contract with like K- KESA K-12? I think a part of their efforts were to track down students as well, so I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but, um, I'd like to, you know, get what the latest update is with, uh, KESA K-12 and how they're doing.
I would too.
I think we, we shared that in our board insight, but I'll definitely, um, see if we actually have some numbers, but how KESA works is if they find a student, then we render payment there. Uh, I'd have to see if there's a roster of students that they're actively seeking and I think that's what you're asking for now.
Right.
Just specifically, do you have a roster that you're actively searching for and how are those efforts going? Is that, would that be fair?
That is exactly it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Same for you. Okay. Additional questions?
Um, I would like to know, um, how many teams you had today? And what was the winningest team?
So, because you made this a competition, I did not, and I'm a competitor, but now that you made it one, it is on, I'll have to see, uh, how many doors they knocked on. Uh, I haven't gotten the feedback just yet, they're nodding heads like they see you, Board Member Love. Uh, Mr. Langston is trying to give me a hint that it was his team, but I would doubt that because he was late.
You're supposed to have this stuff.
I gotta share with you, the board businessman, I gotta save some fun for next week, right? I don't know what's gonna come out in the news, so I gotta save some fun for next week. Uh, but I'll have those numbers. I know we knocked on several doors, certainly we hit, you know, specific districts, if you will. Uh, so I'll share that, that follow-up, uh, in this particular district, how many doors and then what we found out.
Um, this is a serious note. Be extra careful.
Yes.
When you go and knock on a door.
Yes, ma'am. We took security with us.
Yeah.
Security was with each group. Uh, the team thought about that. Uh, I did not travel today, I was handling some business, but I'll be there the remainder of the days, I won't tell you where I'm going. Um, but Board Member Love, I don't, I'm not sure that you were there, but Board Member Hewa Garcia signed up, I'm not starting a competition amongst the board members, I'm just sharing, um, that there are some signups that I saw.
I didn't know until the last minute.
Uh-oh, that's fair, that's fair. The team would probably say the same thing, they didn't know until the last minute, I just told them last Thursday, so they stood up for me.
They have more days this week.
Pretty quickly.
Love, they are available for the rest of the week.
You, you'll be there the last three days, though, I know it. You, you'll be there, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, I'll have a salad for you if you attend, uh, but I'll carry right along so we can move on and go along. Come to win, uh, we'll have day twenty, we'll know who our champions, winners and participants are, uh, for our first, uh, day twenty. I apologize if I've gotten us off focus here, but we are focused, those banners to your left, audience to your right, board, uh, is what will be in front in every school as they enter. Uh, we just wanna make it very clear, what it takes for a student to be a champion, a winner, a participant. I believe that this will be one of our best investments, as you can see our attendance is already up. Now the challenge is just keeping it up and figuring that out along the way. Again, that will show up on progress reports in October on all, uh, report cards, uh, and thank you to those, uh, members of the community who ask, can we just go back old school and start printing progress reports and report cards? And we have made that investment as well. Uh, nothing like receiving that in the mailbox, good news or not so good. And so looking forward to sharing that, uh, very soon. Budget one oh one sessions are coming up, uh, we'll make sure that the team, uh, expounds on that, uh, to share. We are excited, uh, to really break down the budget and what that means, uh, and what the components are, uh, for the general community, but certainly board members are, are welcome to attend. Think Vice Chair has something, I think they're gonna be there. Uh, just wanna share that the budget is, is fluid, one, but it is also year-round. Uh, and so as we continue, um, developing, sharpening, enhancing the budget, making allocations, uh, that demonstrate, uh, our most important work, it's important for the community to understand that when we say we're a one point eight five billion dollar organization and people hear that, what does that look like? And so I had the chance to, uh, see the presentation, have it presented to me, uh, and I found it very beneficial from a fundamental stance. Uh, so thank you for the team for hearing Budget one oh one, bringing the vision to life once again, uh, but also having fun with it. So thank you to Ms. Freeney, uh, I think they're in the back there. If you all would stand up, I do wanna recognize you, you never see the budget people, uh, but also know that they do great work. Is Ms. Elkins here? Anybody back there? Don't hide. So they will facilitate those sessions in the nine oh one cafe just around the corner, uh, every Tuesday in September, uh, just right before we have, uh, sessions in here on most of those days. Vice Chair Coleman?
Can we have a session with the board before we go public? Because we wanna be able to support the budget, but we wanna be able to speak to it also, if it's possible.
Oh, this is just generic. This, this is, we already have an approved budget, this is just generic stuff. I can send you the presentation, so if you do wanna receive something or see something or participate in something beforehand, uh, you can make that decision there, but this is very basic. I'll send that over.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
To all of us, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I agree with, uh, Vice Chair Coleman.
We can get that sent to you tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, speaking of approved budget, can we double check that the final, whole complete budget is online?
So I think the expectation for that was by Wednesday and the team will stand that up, within understanding, as I shared with Board Member Love, um, that it is not finalized. Uh, previous year it was posted until December, uh, as Ms. Knighton gave her a report, there are just, um, numbers that are not finalized, that is based on state, and as we receive things, but as it was approved, uh, we will post that, that adopted budget.
All right, thanks.
Just wanna be clear to the public.
I mean, maybe just a legend that says that, right? Like it's, uh, approved, but whatever, yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, and that is it. Legacy University is starting, uh, for our families, uh, and that concludes my report. Board Member Love and board members, the current enrollment without charter schools is eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four students.
Repeat it again.
Eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four students, that's without charter.
We're on track to surpass last year.
I'd have to look at it and see where we stand because I didn't, I didn't parse the numbers out just separating them, so I can look at that and let you know, let the board know.
Yeah.
But overall enrollment, yes.
Yeah. I would like to know what schools the ASD school, uh, students, um, enrolled in. We took several ASD schools back and they, um, did they come to charters or our traditional schools? Um, you don't have to give me that today.
I just wanted to share that of the anticipated ASD enrollment of sixty-eight, thirty-two, um, thirty-seven, twenty-nine, um, is what we projected to receive, uh, this year, the sixty-eight, thirty-two is, uh, twenty-twenty-four. So thirty-seven, twenty-nine, and if I understand you correctly, you wanna know how many of those, uh, actually chose our district? Okay.
Yeah.
We are now on to the agenda of the staff action items, the first item on the agenda, ten point one.
Could we have the superintendent's report uploaded to board docs? Thanks.
Recommending that the board approve the Tennessee Department of Mental Health substance abuse. Nope, not on there. Nope, not on there. That's it, right? Tennessee Department of Mental Health Substance Abuse Services, I thought that was it, for this year. Tennessee Prevention Network grant in the amount of $75,600.
Questions? 10.2, contract approval, Language Line Solutions.
The recommendation is for the board to approve the one-year contract to Language Line Solutions in an amount not to exceed $165,000 for video remote telephonic interpretation and translation services. This ensures our communication is provided to our multilingual families in their native languages, and that also supports us remaining in compliance with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and Every Student Succeeds Act.
10.3, grant approval, fine arts enhancement.
One of the most exciting things that we're able to do as we demonstrate our emphasis and support of the arts. We're recommending to the board to approve an allocation of $7 million of federal grant funds coming from Title IV, Fund I and Project 5011. This will allow us to purchase musical instruments and fine arts materials for all the schools that currently have programs.
Commissioner Love?
That money's going to be split up in all schools?
So, each school that currently has a band program, then, and I think it is in the attachment, the appendix, it tells you which school. If the full report is not there, I can make sure we give you the full report that shows you the investment, the cost by school that will be invested.
When is this, next week, we're going to prove it. When is this money going to go to the schools?
So, pending board approval next week, we'll begin the next day, standing this up. The team is ready and excited, and certainly several band directors have reached out and just asked. Somebody, several have tagged me. I just want you to know, I see you. We firmly believe in the arts. I don't just believe in dancing to your, to the tunes. We believe in investing in and ensuring that you have. We'll get to the band room soon, but we figure we start with the instruments themselves so that we can attract more students who want to be in the band and in our fine arts program as well. So, excited about this opportunity.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
10.4, contract approval, Covetown Floor Company, Germantown High School.
It's recommended, we're recommending that the board approve the contract to Covetown Flooring Company in the amount of $186,840. This is for the gymnasium at Germantown High School to replace the floor.
10.5, contract extension, Sports Floor Incorporated, Raleigh-Egypt Middle School.
The recommendation for the board to approve the contract extension to January 15th of 2025 for the Sports Floors Incorporated contract. This will allow them to prepare the, repair the existing gym floor at Raleigh-Egypt Middle School. This amount is for $113,438.85 remains the same.
10.6, contract approval, Jesse Bryant Roofing, Westwood High School.
Yeah, recommending that the board approve the contract to Jesse Bryant Roofing. This is in the amount of $2.9 million for the roof replacement at Westwood High School.
10.7, contract extension, structural waterproofing and restoration, Well Station. Thank you, Elementary School.
This recommendation is for the board to approve this contract extension to November 20, November 1st, 2024. This will allow for the foundation repairs at Well Station Elementary School. The contract amount of $383,070 does not change.
All right, now the 10.8 is same company for Craigmont Middle School.
That is correct. Foundation repairs. This is just extending the time needed to perform the work, not changing any of the contract amounts for these two items.
All right. Commissioner Garcia?
I see under the purpose and why for both the last item you read and this one, that the completion date of May 2024 did not begin because of district staffing changes. Can you share more about what happened?
The transition of leadership.
Transition of leadership, and we also had some project managers in the construction department that were over these specific projects that are no longer with the district.
It was scheduled to be completed in May. Were we aware that we weren't doing that? It's now August. What, is it just now coming to us, I guess?
So, when I sat down in the seat, I looked at things that might not have been taken care of as there were transitions happening in the facilities construction department.
Are there any health or safety risks, or have the conditions worsened with the time lost?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. We had guests here to present some updated information for us. I apologize. Gentlemen, if you're still woken here, we'd love for superintendent to introduce you and allow you to come and share with us.
Just have the architects here. Are we still with us? I see you. Come on forward to give a brief update on our new builds for the board, for New East Region High School.
All right, we good? All right, thank you, Superintendent Board Members, for the opportunity to give you this update. My name is Michael Winter, 4F Design, Vice President and Principal. Also with me tonight is South Racy from Renaissance Group. He's in the audience. So, I'll give you a quick update on the design process for the New East Region High School. We go to the next slide, talk about the site. Just as a reminder where we are, we're just off of Germantown Parkway and Fisher Steel. Germantown Parkway is east on this map, and Shelby Farms is close by to the west. The pink area is the main site that we're looking at, and the yellow area is an additional site that we're in the process of acquiring to help with additional ingress egress for the site. So, we're going through a zoning process with both of these sites. So, the next slide will describe the state where we are right now on the main site. We received a no additional action letter from the Tennessee Department of Environmental, or TDEC, for the former CSX rail spur. CSX has just now given us the approval to remove deed restrictions from the rail spur that currently limits school and athletic uses. So, they will be filing a deed amendment shortly to remove that. Just in July, we were, went to the Land Use Control Board with a plan development for the school, and it was proposed, or it was approved unanimously by the Land Use Control Board. So, next steps for both sites on the next slide are outlined. The plan development for the main site will be considered by the Memphis City Council. We were at the subcommittee meeting this afternoon for that project. Board Member Love was there, and also Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Langston was there. We appreciate their advocacy. They, we did get recommended to go to the full city council in September, so we're excited about that. We'll also continue due diligence on the Baptist and Feral Paving Site, the yellow area, and then we will follow that with an additional plan development to the Land Use Control Board to adjust the zoning on that site as well. Next slide, please. Just an overview of the cost. We're, this is a snapshot in time. We're still working through the value engineering process, but where we are right now, the academic building is about 126 million. The site and athletic components are about 32.7 million. So, that's a subtotal of 158.9 million for hard construction costs. Soft costs, FF and E, are coming in right now around 53.1 million. So, the total projected project cost is 212. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot of a lot of the value engineering opportunities that we have, most of which have been incorporated into the slide I just showed you. There are dozens and dozens of options that we're looking at with our construction manager, Flintco Linkus Nixon. None of the proposals that we have looked at so far reduce or change the program or scope of the school, so we're excited about that. Next slide, please. We will be moving into design development, assuming that the value engineering changes are approved. We also have a number of other options we're exploring as a design team to further reduce costs should we need to. Those may come with a reduction to program or scope. And then, once we finish the design development drawings later in 2025, early 2025, the construction manager will review the pricing again and have an updated cost to us that we can share with the board at that time. That's the update I have for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a great evening. Thank you. 10.9, contract renewal, or we have more information?
Hi, my name is Brad Schmidke with A2H. I'm here to update you all on New Fraser High School. I believe we have a presentation as well. If not, I can just speak to it. Great, wonderful. I'd like to introduce Montre as well.
Likewise. Thank you guys for having us today. Montre hangs with TWF Builders.
Great. Great. Next slide. Backup one, please. Great. This is the front door. This is New Fraser High School. You're looking at the student drop, Delwood Avenue to the immediate left, and Steel beyond us. This is about the location of the front door of the existing Fraser High School currently. Next slide, please. And you're looking at the back of the building now, so you're, you're standing beneath the eve of a visitor fieldhouse, looking at the classroom building to your left. And then going to the right, you'll see media, food service, and in the gymnasium with the athletic fields right in front. They're in very close proximity to one another, and we feel it'll be a very dynamic, interesting space. Next, please. Stepping right inside, those big windows, this is the Stair Commons. It's indicative of a lot of the common spaces inside of New Fraser High. The spaces are full of light. They're meant to be flexible, and it's an environment that's meant to be utilized in a number of different ways. Learn everywhere, teach everywhere is a consistent theme that's made its way through the program with this project. Next, please. This is an overall site plan. North is up. Delwood is on the bottom, and Steel is to the left of the site. You can see the, the white portion of the building is what we're looking at images of right now. Construction is starting on that portion now. The orange area, Enhanced Academics, is in an early design phase. That'll be wrapped up and we'll catch up with construction. And we're in the process now of a meeting with community members and alumni, lots of technical staff, and things are moving very quickly on this project right now. Next slide, please. Montre?
From a construction budget overall, we're still looking at the 135 million pricing. We've currently awarded about 16 millions, 16,000 in contract awards as of today. We've currently got another ERP that's about $6 million that we're waiting to get final approval on. So, overall, we've, we've priced about $22 million of the project. We're getting documents this week that'll probably pull the next big budget in. That'll, that'll be probably anywhere between 50 to 60 million dollars that we'll be looking for awards to after we validate those numbers. But overall, we do feel confident within our budget and are still working to try to get dollars down and VE'd out as we move along with the process. Next slide. Just some of the value engineering and cost-saving ideas that we have done to date. We're still working with the design team in Memphis Shelby County to see how we can continue to write size and hopefully pull dollars out of the package, and that'll just be an ongoing and continuous process. Next slide. From a timeline and cash flow, this is just overall providing that information, but we have mobilized on site. We're currently doing demolition work and abatement and earthwork from that standpoint, pushing for still a spring of 2027 completion. Next slide. Here are just a few site photos. It's, it's changing every day if you go by the neighborhood, but this is just, we've mobilized on site. Photos of site clearing where the trees and maybe able to see the earthwork and the grubbing taking place. Next slide. Just more site demolition, the football field and the track and softball fields. All that's been removed from out back, and then as well as interior demolition of the building. So, that's starting to be taking place. And then, there's a lot of heavy machinery and equipment currently on site. So, next slide. Then, that's just our overall update. I do want to add, we, we are trying to reach out to the community to bring activism and partnering with, we've knocked on elementary schools next door, and just trying to reach out to the neighborhood, and still we'll, we'll be working with other programs to see how we can advance and bring community and partnership along with this project. Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. I'm super excited. Rashawn sent out the email today to get the ninth graders, Rashawn Jenkins. Rashawn sent out an email today to get the ninth graders and 10th graders in middle schools involved in our mascot. They will be creating the mascot. Fraser community will vote on it. Top three, and then the board will vote on it last. I want to give you a forewarning. Purple is my favorite color. I will not see the mascots until the board sees them. Rashawn is responsible for that. No matter how much I beg him, he's not going to let me see him until the board sees him.
Thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues? We're excited as we watch the dirt turn and looking for it.
Yes, thank you so much. More, most excited to see pictures. We really wanted the community to have visuals instead of just the word Fraser. So, thank you so much that we're able to see what's happening. Thank you for the good work. Looking forward to continuing working with you. And thank you for your patience this evening.
And I'm scheduling a Fraser meeting next month.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Would like to also see you with our Book It collaboration as well. Thank you so much.
Don't forget the wings. Yes. All right. 10.9, contract renewal for Methodist Labaner Healthcare.
Recommending that the board approves the second-year first renewal option to contract to Methodist Labaner Healthcare in the amount not to exceed $207,000. This is for our employee assistance program services for Memphis Shelby County Schools employees and their eligible family members. 10.10, contract renewal. It's recommended that the board approves a one-year subscription renewal extension to ISMS for a total cost of $212,221.10. This is our platform for our employees in terms of application and talent management. 10.11, pre-ACT assessments, recommending that the board approves purchasing pre-ACT assessments for grades eight, nine and 10 for this school year in the amount of $320,000. This is in our efforts to align with the state's monitoring of the ACT. PSAT will still exist in some parts, but we do want to do better about aligning our efforts for our students with the way that they are actually measured, and so, this is what this investment is in.
Thank you. So, is this the first time we've offered something like this through our district? I mean, it's very exciting because I, I don't think I've recall seeing something for pre-ACT.
Yeah, I think that, and, and Mr. White has been here far longer than I have, and I'm looking at him smiling, so I'm gonna say yes, even if nothing else in quite some time. But certainly, as we think about how do we measure and monitor where a student is, start it back as far as possible, using that to provide the supports, accelerate efforts, and then certainly as they start to choose their classes, scholarships come into play here. We set our students up for success earlier on as they can see where they stand. This is just, you know, part of monitoring and observing where they are in alignment with our efforts in instruction as we think about curriculum that Board Member Williams brought up. Just doing better about aligning all of our work. But certainly, if the state is observing and measuring the ACT, then certainly would be prudent upon of us to utilize the same.
Great, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
You answered my question. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you to the team. Everyone kind of looked at me a little bit when I asked for that, but just aligning our work just makes more sense for us, and so, thank you for making that happen also in a short amount of time. Item 10.12, the Established Certificate for the Works Incorporated, recommending the approval. This is regarding the quitclaim deed for the development of the site of the former Lincoln Junior High at 667 Richmond Avenue by the Works Incorporated, a Tennessee nonprofit corporation, in their efforts for affordable housing. Super excited. Is there a question?
Yeah, this is by Rashawn Austin. That's building the affordable houses throughout the city in different locations for residents. I just wanted to say who the Works is, you know, she's over the Works program.
Okay. Item 11.1, the first reading of proposed policy here. This is 4014, accidents on the job. Do we not pull this? Okay.
Yes, Superintendent, the finalization of that policy was not ready to present at this meeting, so it would have been not presented at the work session. We do want to bring it back in another time when we have the opportunity to get full feedback from all stakeholders.
11.2 approval, resolution to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget. Recommending that the board approves the resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 budget. Okay, great. We'll read it next week. Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Okay. 11.3, resolution for the board's assignment of general fund balance fiscal year 2024-25, recommending that we adopt, or the board adopts, the resolution for the assignment of general fund balance for fiscal year 2024-25 in the amount of $80,504,135.30. Item 11.4. Okay, it will change by next week. This is to approve the board's fund allocations. And item 11.5, extension of pay to displaced employees. Did he leave that? Does that need to be read tonight? Okay, we'll read that as well. Thank you to the board in advance. Did request to extend the pay of our impacted employees to the 31st or the next payroll to align with the conclusion of their benefits. So appreciate that support in advance.
Yeah, Board Member Woods brought this, and I'm sure many of us will want to sign on to it too. I just want to highlight there are 167 impacted employees. So I was previously communicated that the last paycheck was the 15th, 16th?
It was just this past Friday.
This past Friday. You will be getting one more to match your benefits at the end of August 2024.
In a space of transparency, this is the number of employees that we know worked for the district. Certainly, we can't track where they are right now. So do want to share that, I mean, this could be employees that have employment somewhere else. When we say impacted, it's the number of employees that remain that did not seek employment or receive employment as of this date with Memphis Shelby County Schools. So just out of a space of transparency.
Of the 167, how many are coming back to the district?
So the 167 would be those who have not obtained employment with the district, or they may have gone on somewhere else. So there are some I know are employed elsewhere, but certainly we just tracked who remains off the list that you approved in June that had not obtained employment with the district. Thirty-three of those received an offer and declined them, and so the other 134 would be those that either did not receive an offer with our honor to, with our efforts to honor the board's request not to direct place anymore, or they are still in the application process and just have not been hired.
I have a question. We asked you to not to direct place them while the budget was going on. I thought the situation was resolved when the board voted on the budget.
Situation, meaning not to direct place? The request in general was just to not direct place, to just offer the support through talent management based on what the employee may have demonstrated that they wanted or needed, but the request was not to direct place that as it was a demo, it was, it was embarrassing, or whatever the case may be, that how that felt to those employees. And so the request was to no longer do that. So we did not direct place, meaning offer them something specific that we had originally allocated.
I'm confused. After the budget, no conversation with your employees. After the board voted on the budget, no conversation with the 167 employees. After?
In terms of making a direct placement? No.
I'm confused.
The board's request was for the team not to direct place.
Until we have garnered enough support for the budget.
In the budget presentation, I shared that we would honor the board's request.
Because we didn't know what was going on.
I was just offering people jobs so that when we came to a space like today, at least they had something rather than nothing. It may not have been the thing that they wanted, the job that they wanted, with the pay that they wanted, which is what I've shared since I've arrived, but it would at least be something. While honoring that they could also apply for anything internally or externally, and I would still be at risk of having a vacancy, but we would still be able to maintain and keep our employees. At the board's request to no longer place or give an offer, meaning follow our list that Marie Fagans would go to XYZ space in this position because we knew we had this opening or this vacancy, we honored that. Instead, the board requested that we provide the supports, allow those respective employees to choose where they would like to go, what they would like to do, if anything. And so that is what we provided. And so several have applied. Some have had interviews. I'd have to get an actual number of where that sits, who actually was brought on, who actually landed somewhere, which are several. But in terms of directly placing, it was perceived to be a demotion and to be causing anxiety and embarrassment. And so at the board's request, we did stop that and provide the supports to the employees along their process.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I do care.
And if there are still jobs available, I understand jobs are still being posted, and people still have an opportunity to apply.
But is the salaries going to be cut? Their salaries are going to be cut, and they are doing the same job.
I'm not, I don't know that I can say that that is true. I think there were some cases where individuals experienced a salary cut.
Senior reading advisors, their salaries cut, and they are doing the same job.
I think they were once 12-month employees, and now they are 10-month employees, and so that does come with a decrease in salary.
Commissioner Garcia, well, I'm sorry, love.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yeah, I have two questions. First, on our resolution for the 167, what is the total cost for this, for the extension of pay?
700,000, roughly.
Okay.
That includes benefits, which we already have, you know, we're paying that, so just,
Right.
we're not double paying, but I just want to share overall.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. In terms of allocations, do these, I know we have four new board members joining us. Do these start over for new board members? Will they just be part of the onboarding process, or?
No, you pick up with where your colleague left off.
Someone left me a gift in when I came in, and he was over his 120,000.
I don't know that everybody has a gift coming in, but you certainly start with what's left.
That'll be included in their onboarding.
Yes, it'll be updated next week.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, your light is on.
Yes, of the vacancies that you currently have, do you have any positions that these people who have not found a position might have some interest in, whether it is in the classroom, or whether it is supporting instruction in a school, or whether it is in PD or curriculum within the building? Is there anything that we have maybe you cannot compensate? And how are we getting around the point that many of these people who are in this situation were 10-year teachers, which gives them a right to a teaching position only if that's what they're going to have, but it does give them a right to a position if you're going to take their status that they currently have according to state law? So how really, how many people are we talking about, and how well have you communicated with them the need that this district has for them?
Oh, now Board Member Williams, I think the country knows about the need.
But do these people know?
They absolutely know about the need. There were about 36, 37 individuals on the list. If my numbers are right, please don't hold me to that, but it's about 36 or 37 individuals who have a certification and they could teach, but that is not what they were interested in. And so that is that number. The other 130 or so, 130, so that remain, remember, we offered 33 of those. And so when you get down to the number, and I won't do math out loud here, but when you get down to the remaining number there, some of those individuals have gone on outside of the district. And so the few that remain, I share that several of them have applied. And so I don't know where they are in the process, but I can get the board that information and check with the team. And then so we have that handful of about 30 to 40 who either just are not interested in the district, some have retired as well. But the need remains. I shared with you earlier the number of vacancies and where they exist. Certainly, our exceptional education is our most significant because that is one space where we cannot have individuals who have a permit that are in the permit pathway. And so the need certainly has been emphasized with the number, the many blitzes that we've held, the numerous reports that have shared about vacancies, certainly the ambitious goal of having someone in every classroom on day one, and then our continued emphasis of the same. And so communication certainly exists.
So how much money will it cost us to incentivize people to come here, number one? Moving expenses and paying attention, is that a cost that we're going to have to bear too, to bring in new people? Could that be a part of a consideration for the ones who are here?
Already, we already got you there, Board Member Williams. Remember, I shared with you the $5,000 relocation fee that we offered.
And that's for someone who's relocating to Memphis?
Relocates to Memphis, and that includes.
If that $5,000 be given to somebody who's already here?
They're already here. They live in Memphis. I've honored some of those, I mean, not Memphis, in Mississippi. Honored those, but they work here.
Yeah, I was speaking of those who are leaving because they don't want the salary or the salary cut.
We've honored several of those as well. Yes, sir. And also our Move Memphis, in partnership with the Turley's and several additional apartment complexes, housing to support that. Mayor Young placed it in his space, offering housing assistance to those who want to be homeowners. And so, you know, we've certainly spread our wings and done our part to offer and make the space attractive, and it has served as a good recruitment point for us, but we were up against time as well. And so we're really just working with our summer months when you know most people have already landed somewhere. But for our internal people, the one, the remaining 40 to 50 or so, I just don't know that they've seen something they've wanted or if they're just in the process. I can't speak specifically to that without looking at it.
If there were people in this, in the buildings who were doing certain positions like supporting instruction, they were interventionists, or they were curriculum people, do they still have those positions in this? Because my concern is, if you're going to be out of the school or in the school, and you were performing a task that dealt with supporting teachers and supporting instruction, how well entrenched now is the curriculum in every school if you have all of these splitter groups? If you have everybody, you know, this school has a curriculum person, this one has one, when does it centralize? And how does it centralize? By course, by grade level and all of that? And PD the same way, how do they get that support if there is no broad structure to give it?
So there's still a broad structure, Dr.?
It's in the building.
So we have our resources in the building, meaning the individuals, instructional coaches, our reading supports. That, I think that's what you're asking there in the building, but certainly in central office, it still exists. We still have our curriculum instruction office.
You do?
Yes, we still have our.
Where is it housed?
With whom?
Where?
Like, physical building?
Where do they exist?
Physical building. Where is Dr. Maples' team?
I don't know where instruction, where? The TLA?
Yes, professional learning.
So there's someone in that department that supports every curriculum?
There, Dr. Maples is back there. There's still a team there. We just took most of our resources and placed them in the building. They still have a team. Dr. Myricle has a team who oversees literacy. Dr. Myricle, where's your office? Right here.
Where is the curriculum for 12th grade English, and where can I access it?
Dr. Maples oversees that work?
Where is the curriculum? Where is the written curriculum for that course?
You got to come take a visit with me. Can I schedule that with you?
I mean, I should be able to access it without visiting.
Well, I think you're asking where the building is.
No, no, no. I want to know the actual document that the teachers are using.
Remember, I forwarded that to you. I'll refresh it. I'll send it back to the top of your inbox.
The curriculum that is laid out for the entire semester or year, that every 12th grade English teacher has, I would like to see it.
I'll put it to the top of your inbox. Is that fair?
I'll pick it up if you make it available.
Okay, I'll print it.
Commissioner Love and Coleman.
Say Stephanie Love wants to be an educator. How long does she, the process takes for Stephanie Love to be inside of a school?
So I do have the team looking at the number of days, so we can report that out. I will share just an overarching, because some, several principals shared with me today that we have been able to improve and increase our process, which is great news, because principals were the same ones that shared with me that when I arrived, that the process was long, to your point. And so to get the actual number of days, looking for that number, the same with contracts and how fast we move those through, and just looking at efficiency. So looking forward to sharing that.
And a second question, a statement rather.
Yes, ma'am.
Trust the team that you built? Trust them because you hired them? They can do the work if you allow them to.
Sure. I think any member here can share. Feel free to speak. I won't speak for you, but you can certainly let Board Member Love know the trust is deep, it's far, but certainly you can speak to it.
So Superintendent, Board Members, I would say there's a great deal of trust that has been extended from the superintendent to the senior leaders. We have a great deal of direction and a great deal of opportunity to stand up our individual departments. We have the ability to shape the strategic priorities and shape the strategic plan of the district, and there's ample opportunity for us to provide feedback. I have, it's been a refreshing opportunity to be a part of this team and to be allowed such an extension of latitude to shape what the work looks like. So that's from my perspective.
Why is it that several employees that were here last year did away with everything? Communications, he is new. But they did away with things that were working. No disrespect to anyone. It's like y'all forgot all the things that were working.
So Board Member Love, I don't really know how to answer that. I think there's always an opportunity to improve processes as the superintendent mentioned, like even on the talent management side. So, I mean, we don't, we don't make excuses. We know processes need to improve, so.
The process needs to improve, that there were things that were working. I'm not talking about the things that wasn't working. Things that were working. You were, I can't see your name. You were new. But there was a board communication, text messages to let us know important things that were going on in our districts and outside our districts. We shouldn't have to find. We shouldn't have to find out the information on the news.
And so, I'm sorry.
So, I don't want you to comment because you weren't here. I'm just sharing that as an example. I liked it.
Ms. Love, I just something that, hey, how do you change or why do you change something that's working? I would like to add that I think that if we want to go to a different level, you take what's working and then you scale it to the places where it needs to be scaled and you think about it and you discuss it because you do want to see return on investment. And so being here, I know that so many things have worked at one level, but I do know that there's room for improvement. And how do you improve if you don't scale those things that we have right and we move them to that next level? And I will say this, I think we all have been pushed to be in this work, to grow in this work and to see this work move beyond just ordinary boundaries. And I say that wholeheartedly, that we are building on those things that we know that are right, but we're trying to scale those things so that we can go to a different level and so that all of us can excel in academics, in operations, in human capital, even with how we look at our budget. So I would, I would say that coming from a place of truth, of transparency about just being pushed to the level where we want to go.
I understand that.
Thank you.
That is not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Joyce.
Thank you. You asked, you asked one of my questions, but my second question, how many of, excuse me, potential 167 are in the pipeline in HR? Because we know HR took a serious reduction in staff and it's taken them longer to get people processed.
So it's actually taken shorter amount of time with fewer people and we've added some positions. So to just share that on the record where there's opportunities for improvement, I think the process is, is, is long in general because we have to do things in a, in a different way, meaning vetting on the front end. So those are just things that we have to improve. I'm sharing what principals have shared and those are the folks who hire more than anyone else. And they have shared an improvement has, are there still individuals who it takes forever? Yes, because I get the emails, you receive the emails, and they're stuck somewhere in the pipeline and I've sent out emails to say, hey, go press your button, make your selection, do those things. And so, yes, there are still those circumstances. We are certainly not at 100%, but I do want to honor a team that is doing great work. Those cuts in general were recommended and several of those started well before I arrived. I received them in a, in text message and the hierarchy that existed. But in terms of the number of individuals that are in that 167, that's what I was sharing earlier, that I'd have to get those numbers from the team who actually applied and could be in the pipeline or who applied, and they have not been moved through the pipeline because they have not been extended an interview. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I will end my say with this. You will be held accountable, you and your whole staff, when the scores come in in August of next year. Because I am expecting that with these draconian cuts that have been made and changes, that you're going to improve the literacy rate and the scores of the students on those tests. If you do not, there will be consequences, serious consequences, because you have changed the whole system, you have dismantled what has worked in many schools from, and what I'm hearing from teachers are complaints about what's not working and I've not heard it to this degree before. And they are saying it because they are not having the support that they are accustomed to having in the buildings or in the curriculum department or in the PD department. It is, it seems to be displaced somewhere and sporadically placed across the district. So I'm not sure that everybody's on the same page, doing the same thing and doing the same work, but there will be accountability. And I'm certainly expecting to see tremendous growth in August or whenever the TCAP results return, since we've made these cuts and some of them have been called into serious question. But we're moving forward with them and hopefully they will work.
Thank you, Board Member Williams. I'll be sure I meet biweekly with both associations and so they have not brought concerns of that nature. They've shared the opposite and I don't mind sharing those notes with you, but I'd be interested in you hearing.
I can share with you the ones that I have, but I've received it from teachers all day, every day.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing those. And when I sat with you and greeted the, the association, they didn't share, I mean, they shared the opposite and so...
We asked them not to in a public forum.
Board Member Williams, yes, sir, I look forward to having a conversation with you.
I just want to, we've had a lot of comments about accountability progress, so we're really getting clear on what's happening on the ground and we're on the 12th school day. So I want to thank everybody who is working 12, 15-hour days to, to make really hard changes and make tough decisions. And I also want to remind the board that we approved this budget and that we might have to make changes and hold ourselves accountable to the decisions that we made as well. And if we have specific things that we want to see, we need to come with those specific questions, whether that is a one-on-one, whether it is a public forum. We are leaders here too of the district, so the success of our superintendent and our, our executives in the audience and teachers, we're all on the hook together. There's no version of us winning and everyone else. Our kids need us to all work together. So if you have specific things that we're working that are disappearing, let's just bring them out there, bring those questions forward and operate with a sense of possibility that we can adjust. Because when we try hard things, sometimes it doesn't work, sometimes it does, and, and we need that vision. So I want us to all have a sense of possibility.
While we approved the budget, we certainly did not approve all of these draconian cuts and all of the dismantling and all of the structure. That was not the approval of this board.
Well, I think we see clearly.
That was done independently and singularly. So that is, I will not take a responsibility for the learning that's going to occur particularly if there has been, it has been gutted or reshaped or restructured in some way. I would not hold myself responsible for that because that was not my...
Address me as the chair, Mr. Williams, talk to me. I'm not, I want y'all deliberately. All right, through Commissioner Garcia. All right, well, thank you so much for those of you who are listening.
Chair Green, can I, can I respond to Ms. Love's earlier question about trust? Because I think it's important to, in a space where, I don't know if we can call the superintendent new anymore, it's probably worn out by now. But I think it's important to note that in a space where you have a person that's coming in new and we are still learning each other, and I mean, I think nobody makes mention that, you know, there's opportunities and there may be mistakes and there's grace when there's mistakes. We all talk about it around the room and around the table. So when you talk about a level of trust, the superintendent allows us to reach out to people on her behalf. So sometimes to me, that tells you that it's, there's trust there. So I call people all the time, say I'm calling on behalf of Dr. Fagans. So that means that whatever I say, she's now responsible for. So hopefully I, I, I do it right. So I want to say that the team is assembled, we're working hard. Again, the superintendent is, is giving grace where it, it's necessary. We're still learning. So I, I will say that the, the trust is there and is growing. So when you learn, learning people, there's always an opportunity for trust to be built and we're building it every day, not just with the superintendent, it's with the team. So again, we appreciate everybody's support. I will say that this is week three of school. What, what I can say is kudos because outside of the HVACs on day one, for the most part, school has gone off without a hitch. It's, it's, we've been out at schools, the senior leader teams have been out at schools, principals have, have been texting, they've been calling, literally going from one building to another, supporting everywhere we can. So I do want to say, board members, I understand, and Mr. Williams, I understand we all got to be held accountable. Nobody's running from it, so we, we do appreciate the support. So thank, I wanted to say that.
Dr. Richmond.
Yes, I wanted to address Mr. Williams's question. I will say every Friday we have been meeting to address some of the concerns that we know schools have in regards to staffing challenges. So we're doing everything we can to put processes in place to address those concerns and we have really been doing it with a spirit of excitement around the work. We know that our responsibility as central office leaders is to service the schools. So we take those challenges very, very seriously. And again, we're trying to do our very, very best to address them so that we can better support our schools and colleagues. So I wanted to just share that sentiment with you, Board Member Williams.
And I just pray that you hold as fast, as well as you did with the I zones. I do not want to see a decrease in any scores in August or July when they come back.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I respond? As a, as a new person on the team, I feel like it's important to chime in here. So I've worked in several districts in Tennessee, the State Department of Education, nonprofit companies across the country, and I'm frankly stunned sometimes by the latitude that the superintendent does give us as senior leaders to develop plans, to bring them forward, to get feedback from each other. And I want to say that I, particularly just as a, as a person, as a human, have been impressed by the grace with which some of the changes have been received by staff members that have been here for some time. There's been some new ideas presented, some new ways of going about work that have been presented and it's, it's truly a pleasure to work, work alongside them. Board Member Williams, I'm always grateful for your questions around curriculum because I've worked with a lot of school boards and often there's not a voice speaking to, to issues of teaching and learning. And I think the work that we're about this year is ensuring not just that teachers have their materials, but they're supported in using them and using them well. Because as you know, the scores are not where we would have wanted them to be last year despite improvements. And we're working not to just equal those, but to surpass those, but knowing that it's a process and not an event and that it, and that it takes time for a team and a plan to come, to come together and to work well. So we're looking forward to sharing that. I've already shared with superintendent some early data on what's happening in classrooms. We're going to continue to refresh that information on a weekly and biweekly basis and use that as our own internal benchmarks. And we're not going to wait for test scores to tell us the type of teaching that's taking place in classrooms. We're going to rely on our own eyes and the instruments that we're norming on as a team and we look forward to being very transparent and having those conversations throughout the school year.
Yes, sir. Anybody else grace, mercy, say? Come on, guys, y'all got one minute.
Good afternoon to the board. Many of you all know me and know that I've been around for a very long time. And I can honestly say, Dr. Fagans, she has allowed us to grow. She gave me my chance in central office really, because this is truly a central office position, but she's truly allowed me to grow. And I'm learning from her, so I go back and do the same things with principals and with teachers. But when you talk about trust, she, she, she truly trusts her senior leaders to do the work. And again, I could never say anything negative about Dr. Fagans because she leads, she, she leads this district. She is a visionary and I support her.
No jokes.
No, no, ma'am. Good evening, board. I know Love, Board Member Love did not want me to comment, but I felt that I needed to. You talked about not changing things that are working. Well, my official first day was August 12th, but I came up a week early on August 5th, which was the first day of school before I was even employed. And I was visiting high schools, elementary schools, talking to principals, vice principals, literally finding out what worked and talked to parents and asking them, you know, how do you guys communicate? Do you use the text messages? So there's a lot of information that I keep on me, finding out what does work because I don't want to change what was working. I met with my team, my entire staff, one-on-one to also find out what's working, what's not working. And I think we're a lot ahead of schedule right now. And you said that there was a text communication that you all had. I'd be interested to learn more about it because if it works, I'd love to reinstate it. But I get, I get a lot of information, I'm a data junkie, and we're not trying to change anything that is working.
I appreciate all your comments. That is not what I'm talking about. She has to trust y'all to make the right decisions regardless if she doesn't agree with them or not. I signed, I called the superintendent this weekend and the superintendent agreed with me, y'all should not be working countless hours over the weekend. The superintendent agreed with me because y'all have a life too.
We want to conclude, but we do want to share that we love the questions from board members, but that has to come into consideration as well. And so when I responded, I did share that I needed to balance the work, work-life of my leadership team. And so if you don't get it immediately, it's not because we don't have it and we're hiding it, but I do know what I'm pushing and expecting from them while trying to honor giving you all what you're asking for as well.
Because I don't want to read emails Saturday night. I have a life.
Thank you and good night. I know I don't conclude, but...
May the balance of your evening be great.